Roll call. Meek.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Page.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Ray.
Here.
Williams, here. Weiniger.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge. Now time for the DCSD Spotlight.
All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for being here this evening. We have three major recognitions this evening, so I'm going to start with honoring a couple of incredible community members, Krista Gilstrap and Sandra Brownrigg. Please join me up front, wherever you are. Krista and Sandra, I'm not reading a script. Okay. These two amazing women chaired the Invest in DCSD campaign that helped us to ultimately pass 5A. And it is the reason that our teachers are receiving a raise right now, and it is the reason that many of them are going to stay with us. And I hope you both have been able to hear all the amazing stories. I literally just got an email today from a teacher who said that thanks to the passage of 5A, he can finally quit his second job and spend more time with his family. The blood, sweat, and tears that you have put into this campaign, and Krista, last year, this year, I just, I know that all of us here at DCSD can never, ever thank you enough for your tireless, relentless commitment to our staff and our students and our schools. We are just so incredibly grateful. And now I have to look at the script and make sure I didn't miss anything. What? Krista and Sandra, as well as two other DCSD volunteers, who are absolutely amazing, who couldn't be here this evening, Steve Murray and Sarah Mesmer. These four were all instrumental in the passage of 5A and served, all started out serving on the Mill Bond Exploratory Committee together, two years in a row, and recommended to the Board of Education that we put the ballot initiatives on, and then ran off and made it happen. So, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. We can never thank you enough. And I know the Board of Education joins me in incredible gratitude for both of you. All right, do a quick picture. And actually, I wonder if the rest of the directors would like to come and be in a picture with Sandra and Krista.
Yeah, where do you guys want to go?
Everyone go that way. Next, we want to recognize one of our amazing, passionate employees, Dr. Kelly Smith. Would you join me up here along with Deputy Superintendent Danell Hyatt? Kelly was recently named the 2023 School Counselor Advocate of the Year by the Colorado School Counselor Association. This is a very, very significant recognition. Kelly was nominated for this award by a group of counselors and a principal in our district. The purpose of the Advocate of the Year Award is to recognize persons who have demonstrated their belief and support of school counseling programs, and that have had an impact on counselors and their students at the local, state, and national level. Congratulations, Kelly. We are so proud of you. We are so proud that you represent our district. And I know that Deputy Superintendent Hyatt has a few things to say.
Yes, thank you, Superintendent Kane. So, Dr. Kelly Smith is doing a tremendous job supporting our school counselors in our district. Her passion and drive to ensuring that all of our students are receiving the support from our school counselors is truly phenomenal. And it's so much so that Douglas County School District, you may not know this, is now being recognized at not only the state level, we have incredible counselors that are doing tremendous things in our schools, but also at the national level. And her leadership is really making a difference for our counseling programs, as well as the phenomenal counselors that we have in our schools. So, thank you, Kelly.
All right, speech, speech. Dr. Smith, what would you like to say?
Well, I think any leader knows that it takes an entire group. I have followed Danell Hyatt in my career in Douglas County for 11, 12 years now, and you still keep me around. And then Erin, we met, I don't even know, several years ago. But it definitely takes leadership and a cabinet that supports that work. And our lead counselors, our counseling leadership team, and all of the counselors in Douglas County have jumped on board and done intensive training, professional development, spent time, asked questions, and it's really the work that they're doing. So, for me to receive this, it's really their award. And I'm humbled and honored to serve our counselors in Douglas County. I do speak at the state and national level about what great things that Douglas County is doing. And the taxpayers for giving us the ratio 250 to 1, I have not met a district that has a 250 to 1 ratio for counselors. So, you gave us that and were able to move on. So, it's my absolute pleasure.
How about another round of applause for Kelly Smith? Okay, next, we celebrated many of our high school National Merit semifinalists at our last board meeting. So, we're really excited to celebrate our last two high schools. I'm going to start with STEM School Highlands Ranch. Ryan, can I have you come on up here? And I'm going to ask you to introduce your kids. So, for STEM School Highlands Ranch.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everybody, for honoring or taking time to honor our students. For me, this means a lot to be able to recognize one of our students today. So, Spencer, come on up. Okay, so Spencer Newex, he's a National Merit semifinalist, everyone, and congratulations.
Spencer, why don't you tell us what it means to you to be a National Merit semifinalist? Must have taken a lot of hard work.
I guess. I studied a lot, but I think I'm just a, I'm a pretty good test taker. But I think it's really been like a lot of STEM and the unique learning environment that's really helped, helped me to achieve that kind of a score on the PSAT and helped me achieve that sort of academic rigor, I guess.
Thank you. Congratulations again, Spencer. Thank you for being here.
Okay, we did have a second student that wasn't able to make it this evening, but Luke Palca is also a National Merit semifinalist at STEM School Highlands Ranch. So, thank you, everybody.
And we're going to take a quick picture. Director Meek has it. Okay, next, I am going to introduce who I know is the proud principal of Chaparral High School, Principal Greg Gotti, to come up here and talk about and introduce his kids. Greg, come on up.
Hey, before I get going, a little story. I'd like to thank the board, Erin, Danell, Danny, Matt, Mary, everybody, and Krista and Sandra. That email that she was talking about was a counselor at CHAP. And I can't tell you what it meant to him and what it means to me. It brings me to tears. Thank you all for doing all the things that you did. The environment's amazing right now. I love it being at school. So, special thanks to Jamie for putting up with me, because I wouldn't just let it go at a couple of things. So, I've got a list. I'm going to put my thing down and read off the names. So, if your name's read off, please come up. I know that we lost a couple, and I think the traffic jam on I-25 may have held somebody up. So, National Merit semifinalist Camden Eaton, Ismail Nazarov, would you please come up? Commended National Merit Students David Chang, Grace Clement, Samuel Agoff, Jacob Martin, Ryan Olson. National Hispanic Recognition Award Ian Attencio, Connor Bowman, Dominic Cordray, Antoinette Hall, Braden Sandoval, and Sierra Santiago, Abby Valverde, and Zita Vasquez. And National African American Recognition Award Chloe Lorenz, Semi Olawali, and Yvwa Sternkampf. And finally, our National Hispanic and National Indigenous Recognition Award for Sierra Duran. Would you please come up?
All right, so you can't come up here without talking to us. So, we want to hear a little bit about what it means to you to be getting this recognition, and maybe your plans for the future if you feel like sharing.
Yeah, I just want to thank my family for all the support they've given me throughout these years, and also my teachers and all the academic support through that. And I'm very grateful for this award, and I'm very excited to see what happens in the future.
Hi, I'm Zeta Vasquez, and I'm so excited to be getting this award. I have put my blood, sweat, and tears into school the past four years. And I just like to thank my parents and everyone that has given me this point, and my parents that have been just pushing me to do my best and have always just brought me back. Whenever I get stressed out, just pull me right back, tell me it's not the end of the world. And thank you to all my teachers that have helped me get here.
My name is Camden, and it's been my dream for a while now to go to Rice University and study music performance. So, this scholarship could mean a lot to me, because I will be having to pay for that college process. And as we know, that can be quite expensive. So, I'm very excited for this.
My name is Ismail, and this award does mean a lot to me. I want to give a lot of credit to my teachers and my family and everyone else that's like supported me along the way, because I don't think I'd be here without them.
I'm Grace, and I just want to say like thank you to my family and stuff, because it's hard for me to study, but it's a million times harder for a family to have to put up with someone who's studying all the time. So, I just want to thank them and all my teachers who said that I could do it. And this award means like, it's more of a thank you to all of them than anything else.
My name is Ian. I never thought I'd really get any big awards when I started high school like this, but it's only possible because I have great parents and great teachers, and I owe everything to them.
My name's Connor. I'm super proud to be able to have this award. Like, it just means so much to me. And I'm super thankful for all the people who, in my life, have pushed me to be where I am today. And because of this award, I am now going to the University of Alabama. So, roll tide.
Hi, I'm Braden Sandoval. This award means a lot to me. When I started off high school, I started off as like a brand-new student in the state of Colorado, so I had no idea what the future was going to hold. And as time progressed, you know, all the, like she was saying, all the blood, sweat, and tears that you put in school, and on top of that, just like your personal life, finding a good balance between it all, and finding a way to make it all work was, you know, the best part at the end. And receiving this award means a lot. Due to this, I'm most likely going to be going to Arizona State University. So, go Devils.
I'm very grateful to receive this award, but I want to thank my parents for always pushing me and supporting me to be the best person I can, and seeing how far they were able to make it in life has been so inspiring to me, and I'm very grateful for that. And this award, hopefully, it can pay for college, because I'm hoping to go to Miami, and it's pretty expensive down there. So, thank you.
Hi, my name is Yvwan Angie Sternkampf. This award means so much to me, just because I'd really like to thank my parents for helping me along the way, as well as some awesome teachers and all the people up here. Just having other people of color, other really strong academic people around me all the time has really helped me try to be the best I can be. And the light at the end of the tunnel through all of my academics has always been college, and this recognition really is just going to push me towards the end of the tunnel, so.
And this is why I'm the proud principal of Chaparral High School.
And that concludes our recognitions for tonight. Thank you, everyone, for being here to recognize these amazing community members and kids. Thank you.
Great. Let's move on to the acceptance of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Move to accept.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Ray, second by Page. Roll call, Meek.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Page.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Williams, aye. Weiniger.
Aye.
Great, on to superintendent reports.
Great, thank you so much. All right, I have a number of superintendent updates. The Castle Rock Starlighting is happening this weekend. Douglas County School District will have a booth. And as we're talking to our community members, we will focus on thanking them for the passage of 5A and letting them know what it means to our teachers, our staff, and our kids and our school system. So, that is this weekend, I believe, from 2:00 to 6:00. Many of our schools hosted Veterans Day celebrations last Friday. I was able to go to a couple, and I know some of you were as well, and they were just amazing, 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 amazing. There's so many highlights that I don't even know where I would start. But I'm really grateful to have been able to attend the Veterans Day Celebration at Simran Middle School, as well as Mammoth Heights. I also had the privilege, along with Vice President Williams, to see Frozen the Musical at Castleview High School. It was so much in demand that the tickets sold out in like 30 seconds. I don't even know, very fast. And so, they livestreamed it so that more people could see it. Just so proud of the incredible talent and perseverance of our kids, those who were the amazing actors and actresses on the stage, as well as the folks who supported backstage and the incredible orchestra. It was just absolutely amazing and really, really, really well done. We have been celebrating One Book, One District. This week, our district, in collaboration with Douglas County Public Libraries and the Douglas County Education Foundation, are hosting One Book, One District events throughout the week. Last Saturday, over 350 people attended the One Book, One District Community Event at the Douglas County Fairgrounds. I was able to go, and it was so much fun. We had kids reading books to chickens. Now, that is a great way to encourage our youngsters to sit and get through the book. And it was really funny to watch the chickens' eyes follow the book. I don't, I don't know how that happens, but we also had our therapy dogs across Douglas County School District out. And I want to thank our school resource officers for bringing the therapy dogs. Two of the therapy dogs belong to, three belong to Castle Rock Police Department. And it was a lot of fun to have the kids and the adults, and frankly, me, interact with the therapy dogs. We have an incredible therapy dog program here in Douglas County School District that I can't imagine how we would do without it. Part of one school, one district, is collecting toiletry items for C-Cor cares, and we have collected nearly 24,000 toiletry items. So, that is just amazing, and the support of our community has been tremendous. The eighth grade Career Expo was last Friday. We had nearly 2,000 students from across our district attend the 13th Annual Eighth Grade Career Expo at the DCSD Legacy Campus. It was amazing. Our kids got to go to booths, talk to future employers, including us, our IT department represented, and many of our other departments represented, because we need people. And it was really fun to watch our kids interact with organizations that will possibly be offering them jobs in the future, and seeing the excitement among the kids as they really thought about their future and what they want to do. And then, of course, we work with them on those connections to our pathways that we offer here in Douglas County School District. I do want to thank the foundation and all of the sponsors, employers, and volunteers who made the event possible. It was absolutely amazing. Congratulations to the following teams that have competed in the state playoffs, four, and I'm just going to list them. Our girls volleyball teams were in the state volleyball tournament, and that's Chaparral, Legend, Rock Canyon, Mountain Vista, and Castleview. Boys soccer, Rock Canyon, Thunder Ridge, Legend, Mountain Vista, and Chaparral. Football, we had, in the football playoffs, we had Legend, Mountain Vista, Castleview High School, Rock Canyon High School, Ponderosa High School, and Douglas County High School. And in the games, the next quarterfinals, I believe they're called, this weekend, we will, Mountain Vista High School and Legend are still in the quarterfinals. In softball, we have Legend High School, Mountain Vista High School, and Thunder Ridge High School. In golf, the Rock Canyon High School team won the state championship, and individual 5A state champion was an individual from Rock Canyon High School. Congratulations to Charlie Tecker. Boys tennis, Ponderosa High School, and Matt Halsek finished in third place. And then finally, cross country. Congratulations to the schools and students who placed in the cross-country state championships. And of course, a special shout-out to the Rock Canyon Jags, who were named the state champions in team results, and Mountain Vista was in second place. So, Douglas County really represented. Chaparral High School senior Brennan Draper also won the individual state championship. Very exciting. Many of our schools and principals were named winners and runners-up in the Colorado Parent-Family Favorites Contest. We will be recognizing all of them in the December board meeting. For our community, kindergarten registration begins November 7th, or 27th, let me try that again. Kindergarten registration begins November 27th, so please get your kindies registered. And we are excited that, for Thanksgiving week and the break, and we hope all of our staff and families take a break and enjoy spending time with family and giving thanks for all the amazing blessings in all of our lives. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. On to public comment. The purpose of public comment is to balance the ability to hear diverse viewpoints from a broad spectrum of citizens throughout the district, while allowing our Board of Education to conduct business in an orderly and efficient manner. Time has been adjusted to allow all speakers the opportunity to speak during the allotted time for public comment. Each speaker will be afforded the ability to speak once during public comment, for the public comment session for the time allotted. Three minutes will be allotted for each speaker this evening. When speaking, please remain respectful and address the board rather than guests or staff in the room. To respect a speaker's free speech, please do not interrupt them while they are at the podium providing comments. You'll have a 15-second notice prior to the end of your time, so you can wrap up your comments. When your time is up, please leave the podium. If the audience wants to react between speakers, feel free to do so while being respectful and honoring the next speaker's time to speak. However, please do not engage with speakers and other audience members in a disruptive manner. Attendees who create a disturbance or disrupt speakers will be asked to leave the room after a prior warning. So, we will start, generally, we start with a SAG representative, but... So, we will start, generally, we start with a SAG representative, but Mr. Oliver sent, I think, the entire board his notes through Ms. Brockman, so I think we have that. So we'll start with Sandra Brownrigg, then Jennifer Iverson, and then Lucy Squire. So Ms. Brownrigg.
All right, actually, let me start with the first thing. Krista Gilstrap was the chair of Invest in DCSD. I was merely movable ballast on the boat, and so we owe everything to Krista and Sean Walsh, who was our consultant, and everybody else, including everybody I'm looking at, who turned out tirelessly campaigned for that. So thank you. So that's, if I don't say anything else, that's it. But, having said that, I went to the National Governors Association today, and they were having a bipartisan symposium on disagreeing better. And there was this guy from the Heterodox Academy, and their motto is "Great Minds Don't Always Think Alike." And they were talking about disagreement and polarization in the context of everything from Hamas and Israel to local school board elections. And we have all lived that reality. And so when I look at what happened last year versus what happened this year, last year, the district was rife with mistrust and dislike and, respectfully, bad behavior. And what happened to change that was, whoop, you changed. And you led with principled leadership. You made decisions that cost you politically and personally, and you reached across the aisle and you worked with people with whom you disagreed. You also stabilized the district leadership, and that was essential for the district to thrive and for our kids to be safe and well-educated. So thank you, every single one of you. And I thank the people who are coming on, because I'm not going to go down the path of saying that a representative board is necessary for success, but it simply is. And the reason that it is, is because everyone needs to see that they have a voice in leadership. And so the difference between the funding campaign and the school board campaign, arguably, is that in the funding campaign, we intentionally worked with people with whom we disagreed. I have never spent much time with people from teachers' unions, but I worked with some of the people from the teachers' union. I've seen blowback from that online, like we should have had a purity test for our donors to make sure that they aligned with my personal beliefs, and I'm not stupid enough to buy into that type of logic. I also don't think it's good for our kids, because you have a choice.
15 seconds remaining.
You can model staying in your echo chambers, or you can continue to do exactly what you're doing. And so I'm very thankful for you all, I'm thankful for you all, and you're probably not going to see me again, so thanks.
Jen Iverson.
Good evening, Board Directors and Superintendent Kane. I am Lucy Squire, and as you probably know, I am not only a veteran teacher in Douglas County, I am also the president of Douglas County Federation. Douglas County Federation is the union for teachers and staff here, made up of the trusted professionals who serve our students. Standing here tonight as both a teacher and president of DCF, I want to express my deepest gratitude to everyone who voted for 5A. This is a true testament of appreciation for the jobs we do within the district, and seeing the results of the election was such a celebration. Best staff meeting ever last Wednesday morning. I want to thank everyone who volunteered to support 5A and 5B in this election cycle. This includes DCF members, both active and retirees, administrators, district employees and cabinet members, parents, community members, and the Invest in DCSD group. I want to thank the community for supporting 5A and the increase in staff pay. 5A will also help recruit and retain the high-quality staff our students deserve, and with a turnover rate of 23%, passing 5A was absolutely imperative. While this election win was a massive success because of the collaborative efforts of everyone involved and working directly with Krista Gilstrap and Sandra Brownrigg, I want to highlight the efforts and contributions of DCF specifically, because without the support of DCF, this election would not have been successful. DCF created targeted voter lists. We provided the canvassing list app for tracking. We organized and hosted eight canvassing weekends. We all knocked on 15,000 doors. We sent over 68,000 texts to voters. We wrote 16,000 postcards, most of which were written by teachers and were also written the week of conferences to boot. We donated postage, painted nearly 200 cars, distributed yard signs across the county. DCF retirees also held nine voter registration drives at the neighborhood high schools. So this extensive list resulted in a larger voter turnout than in 2021. DCF wants to continue doing what we do best, collaborating and decision-making, and inspiring positive changes for the entire school district. As we have seen, we can all do more good together. Thank you.
And then Chad Cox, and then Kathy Lees. So Amy.
This evening, I would like to talk about Director Meeks' favorite book. She mentioned this during one of the school board forums. That book that she mentioned was All Boys Aren't Blue. Here are some of the highlights of that book. There were several mentions of the N-word, several slur words for homosexuality and homosexuals. When referring to race, the author capitalizes the word "black" and has lowercase for "white." It has anti-law enforcement undertones. It has anti-white references. It refers to heterosexual men and women as cis. It refers to American history as the greatest fable ever written. It has explicit R and X-rated scenes, to include, I quote, "He reached his hand down and pulled out my dick. He quickly went to giving me head." There's more explicit sex scenes, but that's for a later day. But this is her favorite book that's banned, except it's not banned in Douglas County school districts. It's in multiple schools, as a matter of fact. I would also like to refer to Susan Meeks, as she sits on the Douglas County Equity Council. Last week, parents were forbidden to attend because they were holding interviews. There was no notice or anything given, not even a Google link provided. Now, as we know, Meek and Ray were instrumental in the January 31 Zoom call as well as teacher walkout. We know that some of those members in Equity Council promote books such as All Boys Aren't Blue. I think we should make Equity Council meetings as public as we do board meetings. It'd be great. Zoom it in, then we don't have to come in here and complain about it, and then we could learn about, that would be equitable. That's one of Meeks' favorite words. She likes to promote equity. So, okay, 46 seconds. With that, I would also like people to understand that Meeks is instrumental for bringing in No Place for Hate. I suggest she start reading about that, because that book, All Boys Aren't Blue, promotes hate. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Mr. Cox, then followed by Kathy Lees, and then Kelly Mayer.
First, I want to apologize to Director Ray for not being able to attend the reception for you this evening, but I'm going to start off by talking directly to you. I'd like to take just a few moments to say thank you. Words cannot express just how thankful my family and I are for you, the last eight years that you have given to the district. Likely, many will never know just how much time and effort you selflessly gave to our district, to our teachers, to our parents, and most importantly, to our children. You did it, I'm sorry. Likewise, few know just how much one must give to run a campaign for an elected position, and yet you chose to do it twice, and that was for a volunteered elected position. The fact that you did it once says a lot about who you are and what you stand for, but that you chose to do it a second time says maybe a little bit more. You have truly been magnanimous in your directorship, especially over the last two years. I hope you leave your director chair knowing just how influential you have been to all of us. You have given your time, sweat, tears, and I'm sure, just like me, much of what was left of your hair for our kids. All I can give to you are two simple words: thank you. But I hope that those two simple words carry you high for years to come. My kids will give you a card. Next, I want to thank the more than 142,000 Douglas County voters, and I mean all of them, regardless of how they voted. And this is a civics lesson for any students listening or in the room today. Voting is the most important thing you can do when you turn to become an adult. Actually, voting can be the most important thing you do in school. Every vote counts. It is the way for your voice to be heard. Your turnout counts. Your vote counts. Make sure you do your research. Don't listen to your best friend and take their word for it. Do your research. Think for yourself. Vote for yourself. That being said, I'm especially thankful for more than 75,000 voters that helped pass 5A, seeing that our teachers are getting closer to the pay that they so greatly deserve. This is just the start. I'm so proud of the campaign that was ran by the three that won. This will be a way for us to course-direct the mistakes that were made two years ago. Thank you for everybody that voted.
Thank you, Kathy Lees, Kelly Mayer, and then Megan Birch.
My name is Kathy Lees. I am a longtime resident of Douglas County and longtime public education advocate. Tonight, I'd like to thank Director Ray for your committed and compassionate service to Douglas County School District. I wrote this a couple times. Since taking office for eight years, there have been a lot of highs and successes and some challenges and some lows that were really hard. It's really easy to talk about successes, but I think when it comes to handling difficulties, a leader really shows their worth when challenges come. Right after taking office, you attended a very, very contentious SAC meeting at my elementary. It was emotional, it was complicated, there was lots of different agendas, and it didn't get resolved. But what I noted was that you showed up. You didn't have to, but you showed up, and that meant a lot. And that's the legacy that you leave for me, and I think for a lot of other public school advocates, is you show up, even when it's really hard, even when it's really, really uncomfortable and people don't like you. You show up and make really hard decisions that you know people aren't going to like, even your friends. And I just, you kept doing it over and over again, and I really admire that, and I think that's the legacy that you leave us. So thank you so much for showing us what's important.
Kelly Mayer, Megan Birch, and then Krista Gilstrap.
Good evening, Board Directors and Superintendent Kane. My name is Kelly Mayer, and I am a longtime resident and mom of many. I have started my public comments in this way for many years, but tonight I am also speaking on behalf of Douglas County Parents, a grassroots organization formed over a decade ago to elect pro-public education candidates. David, DCP endorsed both of your campaigns, knowing you would work tirelessly on behalf of students, staff, and the community. Your incredible educational background has been such an asset to your leadership. We are forever grateful. We hope you enjoy your long-awaited retirement. Thank you, David, for all that you have done and your family has done. Thank you.
Megan Birch, followed by Krista Gilstrap, and then we'll move virtual.
My name is Megan Birch. I'm a DCSD parent. 5A was a huge win for our district, and I want to start off tonight by expressing my gratitude to all of our current board members. Thank you for voting unanimously to put it on our ballot. So important. I also want to express my gratitude for the Invest in DCSD campaign, all of the community members who worked so hard on 5A and 5B, and of course, all of the voters who voted yes. I want to express my support, my continued support for 5B, and I was excited to see that discussions about that will start tonight. As you take some time to examine data and feedback from the community about the challenges with getting 5B passed, I'm here tonight with a request. Please don't give up on our neighborhood schools. DCSD cannot be a destination district by continuing to go for over a decade without building a new neighborhood school, especially in a community that is experiencing the type of growth that we have. Neighborhood schools are anchors to newer communities. They are designed to serve all students. While charter schools are required by federal guidelines to provide services to students with learning differences, we are seeing these students underserved compared to our neighborhood schools. From the charter presentations at these board meetings, we saw data that charter schools serve a lower percentage of students with learning differences than our neighborhood schools. We've also heard from parents whose children with learning differences have been counseled out of charter schools, particularly after Student Count Day. Charters also do not have the resources to serve students with moderate to severe needs. Additionally, neighborhood schools provide busing to make schools more accessible to families with transportation barriers. Neighborhood schools are also required to follow DCSD policies without the option to opt out, like we saw when some charters made the decision to opt out of the district's equity policy, a policy designed to serve all of our students. DCSD is a district that prides itself in school choice. We have more charter schools than our neighboring districts, and this seems to serve many families and students well. Let's remember that neighborhood schools are also part of that choice. Let's see all the energy and investment in our neighborhood schools, too, schools that can serve all children. We cannot be a destination district without infrastructure, and we cannot be a destination district without the investment in our neighborhood schools. And then, to close, Director Ray, 33 years. Wow, thank you so much for your service to our students and our schools and our community. And I've only known you in this context, in this boardroom, and it's always been very clear, when you see students, that there is so much joy radiating off of you. I hope this next season of your life, for you and your family, is filled with ease and peace. Thank you all.
Krista Gilstrap, and then we'll go virtual to Tiffany Baker, and then Tara Cole.
Hello there. So I'm so excited that we were able to get 5A passed for our amazing teachers and staff, but I have to give glory to God, because he weaved together the perfect campaign, bringing all the right people at all the right time. We saw the whole community come together to make sure 5A passed. Looking at how other ballot-measured fairs fared, we were a major outlier. There were 12 school funding issues statewide and only four passed. Ours was the largest MLO in the biggest district. When you consider the economic conditions and the fact that the opposition tried to link us to HH, which failed epically both here in Douglas County and statewide, 5A should have failed, but it didn't, and I couldn't be happier. Now, there is a lot of information swirling around about how we got here, and I'd like to set the record straight. We would not be here without the work of six people. We would not be here without the work of six people, and those people are President Peterson, Director Williams, Director Weiniger, Director Myers, Superintendent Kane, and Andy Jones. We would not have a campaign without them. These six people went into the most anti-tax rooms and educated people on the needs of how school funding works. They turned staunch anti-tax conservatives into proponents of these issues. They had all the mayors and city councils endorse us. They got Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development councils onboard. They got prominent business leaders to support, and they connected this campaign with the necessary donors to get the message to the people. They were canvassing, going to honking waves, doing media blitzes, and anything else I needed from them for the past two years. They took all the flaming arrows and knives to the back from people they thought were friends, but their support for funding never wavered. It would have been so easy for them to abandon this cause, but they stood firm because they knew this was the right thing to do for our teachers and staff and ultimately our students. So I hope you will all reach out to them, and thank you for this amazing victory. One other thing we saw during this election was the return of the reformers. They have taken over the DCGOP, and they made it their mission to defeat funding. They passed a resolution against it before funding was even on the ballot. I believe they thought this would bully this board into not placing it on the ballot, but that was their first failure. So they decided to run a board candidate whose only position was against funding, and he came in dead last, another failure. So not only did 5A pass, but we saw that this county has zero interest in returning to the days of the reformers, and I hope once and for all proved that someone can be conservative without being a reformer. We have a district full of conservatives who support quality public education. Now sadly, 5A didn't quite make it up the hill, but we knew the bond was a greater lift, and we brought the bond from 36% polling a year and a half ago to 48% in the middle of an economic crisis. The bond will pass, it's just a matter of when, and that's for a conversation for y'all to have. Overall, the future of this district is so bright, and we have so much to celebrate. We saw a very divided community come together to do what's right for our kids, and I hope to see that continue. I don't want to see people retreat into their corners, into their echo chambers of rhetoric and political posturing. I want to see the people who care about this district continue to engage with one another and have the hard conversations that need to happen, because our kids deserve that. I will stay engaged, and I hope others will, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Tiffany Baker online?
Yes. To start off, thank you, Director Ray, for your many years of service to public education. I appreciate you so much. Now to my comment. In September, the Douglas County Captain for Grandparents for Kids, G4K, gave public comment applauding the school board for passing conservative revisions to the parent and family engagement policy. The captain's words were, "The policy is the parent and family engagement policy, and therefore should be focused on parents. Prioritizing the interests of conservative parents above all others is part of the problem with the parents' rights movement." G4K speakers have made it clear in their public comments that they do not agree with the District Accountability Committee that revisions to the parent and family engagement policy should be amended. The board, however, did not follow statute when implementing these revisions without involving their board committee. Grandparents for Kids founder claims that they are non-political group standing up for a non-political academic education, when in reality, these groups are organized to promote conspiracy and culture war themes like seen in the film Whose Children Are They. G4K is being promoted by the anti-LGBTQ group Colorado Parents Advocacy Network, CPAN, who recognized our superintendent with a champion award last year. CPAN has been partnering with far-right groups that promote anti-transgender rhetoric, accusing public school teachers of being rapists, transgender cultists, recruiters for the transgender cult, and critical race theorists. They believe the government is trying to take away all rights from parents by using public schools as a tool to indoctrinate groom students for pedophiles to take advantage of, and then put in medical clinics to force vaccinations and do surgeries such as gender reassignment. They also advocate against mental health screenings and school counselors. These groups build fear in their members that public schools are for the deconstruction of the nuclear family in order to reach critical mass force to ultimately promote tax dollars funding their schools of choice, including homeschooling and religious private schools. G4K has been very active in advocating for book bans in Douglas County libraries, protesting alongside members of Turning Point USA in Cherry Creek, and promoting storytimes with brave books, which all have included anti-LGBTQ themes. So it was no surprise to hear their local captain thanking the board for making anti-trans revisions to the parent and family engagement policy, such as allowing people to misgender trans community members and notifying parents on students' identity, which could possibly put them in danger if their family is not accepting of their identity. Remember, when advocacy groups call themselves non-political, the reality is usually the opposite. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tara Cole, Faith Moots, and then Tammy Fleming.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can, go ahead.
Hi, that was super weird, sorry. Let me get my speech. Hi, my name is Tara Cole, and I wanted to call in tonight to thank the outgoing directors for their service to the community. Although Director Jason Page has not been in the position long, I think he's made an incredible positive impact. Thank you so much, Director Page, for your wonderful care and concern for the students, staff, and the parents of Douglas County, and of the Douglas County community. It is evident in everything you do that you are so humble and that you truly work in dedication to your service to others. I hope that you persevere and continue to find different avenues to use your skillset in elected positions in this county. We truly need more people like you. I have been asked to personally thank you by a few people: Holly Horn, Brandy Bradley, Renee Anderson, Linda White, and many other people that helped support you, and the best DCSD slate in the last election. Thank you so much for continuing to fight with such integrity. Director Ray, I believe that you, as a Christian man, also have a heart for serving others. I know the position of board director takes so much time, energy, and effort. I've spoken to you many times, especially when the schools were unnecessarily shut down and my children were experiencing the devastating effects of decisions that were made by the previous board. As board president during that time, I think it would do so much healing for the community if you would take the opportunity to apologize this evening and recognize some of the harm that was done through extending unnecessary shutdowns, masking young children against the will of their parents, and forcing wonderful charter school principals in Douglas County to come in front of the dais just to beg to opt out of ridiculous political policies that were put in place just so they could serve the children of Douglas County in person. I also want to mention using the political power behind closed doors to launch a politically motivated lawsuit against the Douglas County Board of Health. I think tonight would be a wonderful opportunity to provide some accountability in each of those areas and make things right within the community before your term is over. I know it would certainly mean a lot to me. Here's hoping for positive momentum for the full board in the future. Thank you both for your service to Douglas County as board directors.
Faith Moots, Tammy Fleming, and then Holly M.
Ms. Moots is not online.
All right, Tammy Fleming.
She is online, and I'm asking to unmute.
Using the political power behind closed doors to launch a politically motivated lawsuit against the Douglas County Board of Health. I think tonight would be a wonderful opportunity to provide some accountability in each of those areas and make things right within the community before your term is over. I know it would certainly mean a lot to me. Here's hoping for positive momentum for the full board in the future. Thank you both for your service to Douglas County as board directors.
Faith Moots, Tammy Fleming, and then Holly M.
Ms. Moots is not online.
All right, Tammy Fleming.
She is online, and I'm asking to unmute.
Oh, is it my turn?
It is. We can hear you.
Can, can, hold on. Can you hear me?
We can, go ahead.
Oh, hi. So I just wanted to call in tonight to take the opportunity to thank outgoing Director Jason Page for his time served on the board. I have had the pleasure to get to know Director Page, and he is exactly the kind of person that needs to be in charge of educational policy for our kids. Director Page jumped right in with both feet and got busy doing the work from day one. He is rock solid in his faith and his service to others, and he looks at everything through a lens of what's best for kids. The number of votes that he was able to earn from the people of Douglas County, even when his own Conservative Party's Executive Committee was working actively against him for political jockeying, speaks volumes about how well-loved he is in the community. Jason, you are a unifier and the kind of positive example we can all look up to. Thank you for fighting against restrictive COVID shutdowns and mandates during your time at Ben Franklin, even before you were a Douglas County School Board Director. Thank you for jumping in to a challenging committee right away. Thank you for being present at so many district activities in such a short time, and thank you for truly advocating for what is best for the teachers and kids of Douglas County. I wish we had longer for you to serve as our director. From your community in District C, please don't stop fighting for our kids, and I'm looking forward to seeing you in a leadership position again soon. Thank you very much.
Great. Last, we have Holly M.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Thank you so much for your service. I would like to voice my opinion against the listed novels and texts being considered for adoption under the guise of academic excellence. There are 15 novels and texts up for consideration, and it is these books I would like to address. I believe these books to be misleading at best and destructive at worst. Over the past five to 10 years, I have voiced my concerns that our education system has flooded with teachers and administrators that are subversively subjecting our children to opinions and material that is not age-appropriate and very politically biased. I have witnessed the growth and development, not as I wanted to see in children, but in more and bigger governmental entities created for the sole purpose of equality, which I do not understand and seems to contradict if, under equality, we must also recognize individuality and diversity. I have referenced that these are the underpinnings of Marxist ideology neatly packaged but not labeled as CRT. These books and texts serve to miseducate and support certain political agendas over core educational material. These books are inflammatory and prioritize feminist and racist themes under the guise of education, resulting in severe psychological and political implications that no one is talking about, including but not limited to gender, racial, and generational guilt, fostering deep-rooted angst and hatred among specific demographics, segregating certain children by race, and driving a wedge between children and their parents. These books also serve as gaslighting to parents who work hard for their children, men who stand up for the moral standing and innocence of these children, mothers who nurtured and brought up our children to respect elders, and the familial unit with its beautiful heritage and traditions. Even the textbooks serve to promote agenda-driven bylines and steer the learner to apply politically-driven derivatives and outcomes. These books are absolutely CRT-driven. I do not understand why the board won't just call a spade a spade and call CRT for what it is. Everything about it is something that we should all buy into, and there should be no problem with identifying it for what it is. The truth is, CRT erases everything that makes us all unique and flattens us into one indiscernible layer of human goop to feel guilty enough for our mere existence that we willingly accept the population control narrative and the climate change narrative. CRT teaches that we can attain equality by driving that class struggle wedge, pitting us against any given societal factor. It is my recommendation that these books be thrown in the garbage where they belong and replaced with literature that children can learn and grow from. That's my time.
Yes, thank you. All right, that will conclude public comment, and without exception, we will take a 15-minute recess, coming back at 7:15. recess, coming back at 7:15. The Board of Education is now back in session. Onto the Adoption of Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Consent Agenda Items 15, 16, and 17, and remove 14 from the Consent Agenda, please.
Okay, so we will move number 14 to directly after we vote here. Do I have a second? All right, roll call. Great, all right, so since you polled number 14, Director Ray, I'll let you go.
Thank you, Director Williams. I think, given we had a public comment tonight, I'd like just to have Ms. Reynolds or Superintendent Kane just talk to us about some basic things around how about the process we go through to select novels, also the process that we go through when there's a community member that wants to challenge our selection, and then certainly the criteria that we use when we make that decision to recommend those to the Board. So just some basic kinds of things around process, please.
I'm going to have Mr. Reynolds speak to that, but before he does, we do have, as you mentioned, Director Ray, we do have a process for community members challenging a resource, and in fact, we will be looking at that policy tonight. That'll be one of the changes that you are looking at, and with that, I will hand it over to Mr. Reynolds.
Good evening, Directors. Thank you very much for the question. Our textbook adoption follows a series of policies that are under IJ. There's several different exhibits that follow a specific process by which we review both novels and textbooks. With both novels and textbooks, we do look at the content to make sure that it addresses the Colorado academic standards. There are cases where we adopt textbooks and novels that don't address the Colorado academic standards, and those are specific for programs such as concurrent enrollment and things where the objectives are for higher education. The next thing that we do specifically for novels is we do look at professional reviews of all of those externally as well as internally, where schools, when they adopt a novel, they do have to review the novel within their school and also with other schools, inclusive of community members and their school accountability committees. So outlining that process, there is also some review regarding AP. Many of the books that you see on tonight are related to AP, so they do cross-check against Advanced Placement. Advanced Placement does have their own criteria regarding what curricular resources need to be available to address their content. AP classes do not have a specific set criteria for all of their resources, but they do provide guidelines for what needs to be in those novels in order to be part of their program.
So, thank you, Mr. Reynolds. So do we ever select novels to promote a political agenda?
Very interesting question. Each of their novels do have different themes that are associated within the novels. They're not associated with any sort of political ideology per se. It's based on the themes that are embedded within each of the novels.
And how do we determine age-appropriateness of our novels?
Great question. That really is where you rely on both internal and external reviews. Externally, most novels have professional reviews that are done that provide suggestions of the content. There's also Lexile levels that they do look at, but it's really the professional reviews and also our internal reviews, where we have both parents and teachers and staff members that do review and make suggestions on windows of opportunity for which grade levels those are appropriate for. If there's any question, then what they'll do is they'll attach an additional requirement for having parent permission along with that novel.
And these novels were set out for public view. Talk about that process. Where does that happen, and how long were they set out for review, and how would that feedback have been collected for people that wanted to give that input?
Great question. It does at two levels. When a textbook or novel is proposed at a school level, the school who is doing the proposal, they set out those resources in their own library for public consumption. They do have a meeting that they conduct at their school accountability committee to review that resource. They make it available. Once that process gets through to the point where we're going to propose it to the Board, I provide you all a memo and make those resources available in our superintendent's office for public viewing.
And then maybe Superintendent Kane. If there were a family that perhaps didn't want their child to read one of these books in class, would they have the opportunity to get a different novel or a different item?
Thank you for that question, Vice President Williams. Yes, there is an opportunity to opt-out. The only exception to that is concurrent enrollment courses, where the coursework is set by the college that is giving the credit. But outside of that, if there is an objection to a novel that is being read, the student, the parent may request an opt-out. And I also want to mention EDB-R, which the Board saw earlier this year, which addressed opt-outs and also addressed balance in our classrooms and the importance of teaching balance. So they might have a resource that advocates one point of view, and then they would balance that with something else to make sure that our kids really are learning to critically think. So I know our teachers are incredibly dedicated to that work each and every day.
If there's no further questions, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we adopt item number four, approval of novel and textbooks.
Great, all right. So number 14, I think that was...
I just wanted clarification, and I believe Vice President Williams just made it. It is item number 14.
Is that what I said?
You said four, but it's okay.
Fourteen.
Right, okay, so motion by Ray, seconded by Myers. I'll go ahead and take roll. Meek? Page? Great, thank you. Onto number 19. So study action items, response to the bond and MLO election results would just be a 20-minute discussion amongst the Board. Obviously, very happy about 5A and all of the greatness that that's going to provide our staff and hopefully be able to retain and then recruit. We have some cadets back here that are going through the program at Legacy and I think at Legacy, right? No! Oh, I'm so sorry, Dr. Page. Yes. Anyway, yes, Highlands Ranch High School. So thank you guys for being here. But anyway, hopefully this will provide us longstanding, great employment opportunities for teachers and staff alike. So thank you to the taxpayers for voting yes on 5A. Obviously, we fell short on 5B, so I think that's going to be our biggest...
Kane just talk to us about some basic things around how, about the process we go through to select novels, also the process that we go through when there's a community member that wants to challenge our selection, and then certainly the criteria that we use when we, when we make that decision to recommend those to the Board. So just some basic kinds of things around process, please.
I'm going to have Mr. Reynolds speak to that, but before he does, we do have, as you mentioned, Director Ray, we do have a process for community members challenging a resource, and in fact, we will be looking at that policy tonight. That'll be one of the changes that you are looking at, and with that, I will hand it over to Mr. Reynolds.
Good evening, Directors. Thank you very much for the question. Our textbook adoption follows a series of policies that are under IJ. There's several different exhibits that follows a specific process by which we review both novels and textbooks. With both novels and textbooks, we do look at the content to make sure that it addresses the Colorado academic standards. There are cases where we adopt textbooks and novels that don't address the Colorado academic standards, and those are specific for programs such as concurrent enrollment and things that, where the objectives are for higher education. The next thing that we do specifically for novels is we do look at professional reviews of all of those externally as well as internally, where schools, when they adopt a novel, they do have to review the novel within their school and also with other schools, inclusive of community members and their school accountability committees. So outlining that process. There is also some review regarding AP. Many of the books that you see on tonight's are related to AP, so they do cross-check against Advanced Placement. Advanced Placement does have their own criteria regarding what curricular resources need to be available to address their content. AP classes do not have a specific set criteria for all of their resources, but they do provide guidelines for what needs to be in those novels in order to be part of their program.
So, thank you, Mr. Reynolds. So do we, do we ever select novels to promote a political agenda?
Very interesting question. Each of their novels do have different themes that are associated within the novels. They're not associated with any sort of political ideology, per se. It's based on the themes that are embedded within each of the novels.
And how do we determine age appropriateness of our novels?
Great question. That really is where you rely on both internal and external reviews. Externally, most novels have professional reviews that are done that provide suggestions of the content. There's also Lexile levels that they do look at, but it's really the professional reviews and also our internal reviews, where we have both parents and teachers and staff members that do review and make suggestions on windows of opportunity for which grade levels those are appropriate for. If there's any question, then what they'll do is they'll attach an additional requirement for having parent permission along with that novel.
And these novels were set out for public view. Talk about that process. Where does that happen, and how long were they set out for review, and how would that feedback have been collected for people that wanted to give that input?
Great question. It does, at two levels. When a textbook or novel is proposed at a school level, the school who is doing the proposal, they set out those resources in their own library for public consumption. They do have a meeting that they conduct at their school accountability committee to review that resource. They make it available. Once that process gets through to the point where we're going to propose it to the Board, I provide you all a memo and make those resources available in our superintendent's office for public viewing.
And then maybe Superintendent Kane. If, if there were a family that perhaps didn't want their child to read one of these books in class, would they have the opportunity to get different novel or a different item to?
Thank you for that question, Vice President Williams. Yes, there is an opportunity to opt out. The only exception to that is concurrent enrollment courses, where the coursework is set by the college that is giving the credit. But outside of that, if there is an objection to a novel that is being read, that's the student, the parent may request an opt-out. And I also want to mention EDB-R, which the Board saw earlier this year, which addressed opt-outs and also addressed balance in our classrooms and the importance of teaching balance. So they might have a resource that's, advocates one point of view, and then they would balance that with something else to make sure that our kids really are learning to critically think. So I know our teachers are incredibly dedicated to that work each and every day.
If there's no further questions, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we adopt item number four, Approval of Novel and Textbooks.
Second? Second. Great, all right. So number 14, I think that was, great.
Oh, sorry.
I just wanted clarification, and I believe Vice President Williams just made it. It is item number 14.
Yes.
Is that what I said?
You said four, but it's okay.
Fourteen.
Right, okay, so, motion by Ray, seconded by Myers. I'll go ahead and take roll. Meek.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Page.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Williams. Aye. Weiniger.
Aye.
Great. Onto number 18, the adoption of, approval of minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes, sorry.
Good.
No, we're gonna let you do it all night.
Second.
Myers, so great, okay, roll call. Meek.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Page.
Aye.
Peterson.
And approval for the, or excuse me, October 10th meetings, aye.
Thank you. Ray.
Aye.
Williams. Aye. Weiniger.
Aye.
Okay, good, thank you. Onto number 19. So, Study Action Items, Response to the Bond and MLO Election Results, would just be a 20-minute discussion amongst the Board. Obviously, very happy about 5A and all of the greatness that that's going to provide our staff and hopefully be able to retain and then recruit. We have some cadets back here that are going through the program at Legacy and, I think at Legacy, right? No! Oh, I'm so sorry, Dr. Page, yes. Anyway, yes, Highlands Ranch High School. There we go. So, thank you guys for being here. But anyway, hopefully this will provide us a longstanding, great employment opportunities for teachers and staff alike. So thank you to the taxpayers for voting yes on 5A. Obviously, we fell short on 5B, so I think that's going to be our biggest probably, probably talk this evening and to figure out how to move forward there. I know we talked about it at LRPC the other night, and I'm assuming, Director Weiniger, that either you have had the conversation with FOC or you will be having, yeah, the conversation. So, anyway, just open it up to anybody who wants to, oh, I'm sorry, President Peterson has something to say.
Yeah, I'd just like to start off, I'm sure, with everyone else here on the Board, I'd like to thank my fellow Board members, as was mentioned at previous meetings and in some public comments, I believe by Ms. Gilstrap, getting the community to come together and specifically getting this Board to come together to do what's right. As I, as one Director have said, the best way to take care of our students is to take care of the staff that takes care of our students. And I think that the passage of 5A was the right way to do it. The fact that we asked local voters to decide whether to raise taxes to keep those local to support our school district was exactly the right way to do it. I am very thankful to all the members of Douglas County that voted to give our staff, and not just our teachers, our nutritionists, our security specialists, you know, our bus drivers, everyone that goes into this incredible district. I just applaud you and I applaud your efforts, and I could already feel the anxiety, the nervousness come out of the district. And just for everyone, we only closed the gap in our MLO by half, but we did catch up significantly, and as the number one employer in Douglas County, to give those folks in Douglas County a 7% and 9% raise, especially in this economy, was an incredible lift. So thank you, thank you, thank you, voters. The second thing I'll remark on very quickly was remember, the MLO this year had $6 million specifically dedicated to security, and though our charter schools are getting one out of every four of those dollars because they have 24% of our students, just my expectation as we go forward as one Board member is to take that money and make sure that we have an armed presence in every school. Now, we'll talk to our experts, Johnny Grusling, our Director of Safety and Security, obviously Superintendent Kane has the main lead on the how we get that done, but that would at least be my expectation as one Director, that we take that money, we keep our promises that we made to our taxpayers, and not only do we take care of our staff, we specifically up the security game, the physical security game in our schools. That's it, thank you.
Director Ray.
Go ahead.
Director Myers.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to the community. I believe the next day was just ecstatic with text from people about getting the raises, and my own daughter just elated, and I think Krista Gilstrap, Sandra Brownrigg, talked about those difficult conversations that we had to have with people that just in this day and time, and with everything that's happening and the tax increase, to really convince our community that this was needed, and it was needed critically, drastically, and we, I cannot say, we cannot say thank you enough to our community, and they're, just what they will see coming out at the Douglas County now, and I believe I even heard a rumor that there's people that want to return to Douglas County. So, thank you, thank you.
Okay, now Director Ray.
Thank you. No, I, I would totally agree with all the accolades, and certainly Krista Gilstrap, Sandra Brownrigg, and the whole invest in DCSD deserves lots of accolades and all the volunteers, and so I would concur that it gave us a lot to celebrate. I think for me, my reaction, I had two reactions. One is relief, more than being celebratory, because I'm relieved, as Director Myers pointed out, that, hopefully, and Director Williams pointed out as well, that this will be the carrot that keeps our staff here. But I think we have to also be very honest, as Director Peterson shared, we only moved the needle halfway with the gap. We've got, we still have work to do, and we do want to balance that by thanking our community and thanking them for the support, but at the same time, I think we have to be cautious that we don't give the impression that we're done, because I think the community will, may remember and think that this is it, and it's, and it's not. We have a lot of work still to be done to make sure that our, our staff feel that this is the place they can make a career and, and this is the place they choose to come. So I want to just express again the relief I felt. I think we also, I really appreciated Superintendent Kane's acknowledgement in her communication, especially about Douglas County Federation, who we certainly heard our DCF president talk about the incredible impact they had in, in terms of helping get the word out and the work that they did. And I would just say that I think, given that, given that we saw so much staff really step up this time and really participate, I think that was, to me, what really put us over the edge, is, is our employees, quite honestly, really sold this for the district. And I would just add that I think, you know, it's time for us to really talk about other things besides just compensation. How, you know, what do we do to make sure we're elevating our employees' voices? What do we do to protect our employees? Because we know that we're in a pretty tough world right now with lots of attacks on public schools, lots of vitriol, we heard some of that even tonight, and so I think some of our work is to really look beyond just the compensation and really talk about what do our teachers and our employees need to feel like their voices are truly being heard. So I would just encourage us to really explore. I know we've done, I know Superintendent Kane or Cabinet have done an excellent job at looking at other incentives, which I know staff are greatly appreciative of, but I would just encourage, as I'm leaving this dais, that time be spent on asking that question. What do we do in return to show our staff that they're valued and to show that their voice truly is going to be elevated and, and protected? So that's the 5A. The 5B is the disappointment for me, quite honestly. It's, it, we have to be honest that we now have children that will never experience an elementary neighborhood school. And to me, that's, that's tragic, I really believe. You know, we are in a position where we're going to experience crowded classrooms, we're in a position where we have buildings that may need to be shut down temporarily because we haven't been able to maintain them like we thought we could with 5B. The fact that we haven't passed 5B two years in a row, I think, is even more concerning to me. And I think for me, it's, you know, when you look at our results, it's those 5,000 voters or more who voted for 5A or who didn't vote for 5B that I think are the most intriguing people for us to talk to, and not from a standpoint of saying, "We want to change your mind" or tell you that you voted wrong, but from a standpoint to truly listen and understand, what are we missing? What is it that we're not doing for the sake of children that caused you not to take the next step and also vote for the other initiatives? So I think, I would love to see us really focus on those 5,000 voters and spend some time really understanding where they are. And so those, I guess, are my initial, my initial thoughts. Relief, disappointment, and, and a hyper-concern for our facilities and the, the culture that we provide for our kids. Thank you, voters, truly. I will end with that, and look forward to seeing what we do in the future.
Great, Director Weiniger.
Yes, thank you so much to the taxpayers. It, I personally did not love putting forward a tax initiative in a time of inflation and rising prices and uncertainty, but it was absolutely necessary to give our, our people who take care of our kids, like President Peterson listed, the bus drivers, nutrition, teachers, let them have a salary in this inflationary environment that they can survive on as well and that they deserve to have. So thank you so much to the taxpayers, 100%. I promise, as one Board member, to be a good steward of those funds. They're already going to be spent toward our staff on their comp, and they already had a presentation from Superintendent Kane around that and an FAQ around that, and yes, I'm so thankful, thank you. And I just also want to say that we do have our Emboc Committee, which is the Milbon Oversight Committee, that will have oversight over the MLO, if you're interested in joining that. It's on our website. I believe there's positions open, but we're all going to be excited to meet again in January, and know that we get to keep that committee going. And then with 5B, I'm in the same area as Director Ray, kind of in that feedback area, like what does this mean? I, I personally not sure what it does mean, but I'm in the feedback mindset to see, see where, where we go with that. So thank you again to Douglas County.
Director Meek.
Yeah, so many thoughts. I think we saw the power of collaboration. I mean, for me, seeing our community come together, seeing the teacher support, seeing the other elected officials in our county, seeing everyone come together to work towards educating our community, seeing the headline stories in the local media, right? We can't fail when we choose to come together, and I think that's a really powerful message for us to take in. The entire Board was united on this, and I think it does show the power of a representative Board, and I think all of us worked very hard to convince people who trusted us that they should vote. There, I mean, I was out campaigning, knocking doors, dropping lit for 5A and giving presentations, and had to convince people that they needed to trust all of us, and they needed to trust and invest in our students and our school district. And it looked really different for each of us with our own communities. So I don't think any one of us, you know, like all of us were taking arrows from individuals, convincing them they needed to trust our school district, and a vote for 5A was a vote for our students, our staff, and our community. And so for me, I think it does show the power of a representative Board and what we can achieve if we choose to work together. And I think that was just a very powerful reflection. Also, I think we did a great job talking about it being a crisis situation. Like, school funding was in a crisis situation in our school district, and I think I've talked about this at prior Board meetings, you know, 5A is addressing the immediate crisis, it's not solving it, and as a Board, we need to be thinking long-term, what we should be doing to advocate for adequate funding for education. And it's, it's bigger than just our district, and I think the power of what we can achieve if we choose to work with other districts and band together to really try to address funding for Colorado students. So that was another, another big takeaway. I think we heard some comments, you know, "We can do more good together," and I think that goes back to the collaboration. So when it comes to 5B, we also heard the bond will pass, it's a matter of when. I believe that, too. I, I don't think we did a great job explaining what a value 5B was for our community when it comes to what that investment cost would be. I don't think our community understood that at all, and I know we received advice from consultants that we needed to just band it all together, but I don't think our community understood how they could have supported 5B without a tax increase. So I think that's an area where we could do better. I know I attended, I signed up for every single school funding presentation that I could attend, and I believe the one in the Canyons, we only had a couple of people show up, and that was a community that would benefit. So I think there's a lack of awareness, and I think that's just an area that we could do a lot better. So I'm very, very interested in soliciting feedback and input and really trying to make informed decisions for what the next steps should be for 5B.
Sure. Yeah, I definitely think that all of us took our fair share of arrows for that, and, you know, me being, you know, one Director who, you know, stepped in, you know, for the, just for the few months that I was here, it's the work that needed to be done, and that's the decision that needed to be made. You know, I looked at the budget, looked at, you know, all the, all the material that we had out there, and that's, you know, for the good of, you know, our students and our staff, but just our, our county, our way of life. I mean, this, the school district is, you know, the heart of this community. You know, it's the biggest employer, you know, one of the biggest landowners and building owners, and, you know, the economic, you know, just engine that the school district is, you know, I think there's just, you know, a certain amount of people that have just such a short-sighted view of what's, this is going to impact me, you know, tomorrow, and it's going to cost X amount of dollars, and I don't want to, I, I can't do it. And, you know, some of those people are, have legitimate concerns. You know, we have 70% of our population that, that do not have schoolchildren, you know, in our schools, and so it is a big deal, but the idea that you're now a steward of the community, you know, you may have grandkids, you have, you eventually could hire some of these students as they become adults, these are going to be your neighbors at some point. You have to think longer term than just, you know, that short-term, you know, dollar impact, but what does this mean as an investment in the community that my kids and my grandkids and my great-grandkids could possibly, you know, live in? And so whether that costs me an election, I don't care. It's what was right, and that's a decision that I will stand by, and I will lose every election if, that I ever enter, that if I feel I'm making the right decision and that costs me, it's not about me. It's about what's good for the community, and I'm glad that, very glad that 5A's passed, 5B, you know, we have challenges, but I think being possibly unleashed from the Board, I may have some ability to, you know, in the private sector, maybe figure out some solutions that maybe, without having an official title, allows me to kind of enter into some, you know, discussions that maybe I couldn't have otherwise. So let's figure it out, let's get creative, but very thankful that our teachers are getting that raise. We thank them so much for what they do for our kids, and yeah, let's have those discussions, but, you know, let's open up the, the box of creativity and see what we can't do to make 5B happen, even if it's not in the way traditionally that we've done it. Maybe it's time to look at other avenues to see what we can do.
Great, and I think President Peterson had one more thing to say.
Just very quickly, relative to 5B, I agree with Director Ray's comments regarding that we have to, we have to not go another 12 years in between bonds. We have $35 million annually on our 111 buildings, you know, we have 90 schools, and, you know, the maintenance, the, the dollars are not fungible, you can't take 5A money and spend it for 5B infrastructure. So that's something we're going to have to really look at as a Board, as a district going forward, but we cannot take 12 years off in between bonds like we did between 2006 and 2018. My last comment will be that last week I was able to appear before the Colorado Department of Education with Superintendent Kane, Director of Choice Programming, Gordon Mosher, and Elliot Hood, that was helping represent the district in the appeal of John Dewey Institute and Alexandria, Alexandria School of Innovation, where we denied their charter, and I stand by, it was the absolutely right thing to do, given a variety of circumstances. That being said, with 5B not passing, if charter- a variety of circumstances. That being said, with 5B not passing, if charter leaders are listening out there or potential charter leaders, please put together a viable package. Please get with Gordon Mosher, our Director of Choice Programming, who leads our card, our charter application review team. And we may be asking our charter leaders to step up again in this void. And if you have a good, valid, tight package, that's something that this board, all seven directors will consider this next year to possibly help fill that need throughout the county. So thank you to our charter schools and our charter leaders as well.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to number 20, Bond Mill Next Steps. We have a 20-minute presentation followed by a 10-minute Q and A.
All right. Good evening, directors. Thank you so much for giving us the time to present Next Steps tonight regarding both 5A and 5B. And so I, the numbers are a little out of date because these were the unofficial results before the official ones were published. The Mill Levy override received 52% support from our voters. And 5B received about 48% support from our voters. 5A came in three points higher than expressed. Certainly, the district, we have such gratitude towards our voters and our taxpayers for being willing to invest in our kids and in the future of our school district. And I hope that our staff heard loud and clear that the community absolutely supports them. Whether they're teaching in our schools or helping keep our schools clean or driving a bus, your community supports you. Our community supports our schools. And that is just amazing. And of course, we owe an incredible amount of gratitude to the campaign, our many community partners that helped move this along, and of course, to the voters. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the Mill Levy override, next steps, bond results, planning forward, and certainly time for directors to ask questions. So this chart may be look familiar. This is from the many bond and MLO presentations that, that we have done. This is the details of the MLO. 60 million of that 66 million is for competitive compensation and 6 million is for enhanced security staffing and safety. So the total Mill Levy override was 66 million. And again, 60 goes to compensation and six to security. And for both allocations, 24% goes to our charter schools that basically we raised another a little over $1,000 per student. And so our charter schools get that $1,000 per student so that they can use it for the same purposes, which is compensation and security. Okay, so I know you're all very, very familiar with this chart. On the left, we have what we looked like before. And on the right, we have what we looked like now. And I very much appreciate President Peterson and Director Ray and many of you pointing out that we are not at the level of our neighbors, but we are at the level, level of Jefferson County. So that's really good. And so you can see that we've raised about another $1,100 per student by passing 5A, which will allow us to be more competitive with our neighbors in Littleton and Cherry Creek. Now, one of the big differences is that, like the MLOs that we have passed before this one, 5A is a fixed dollar amount. So our MLO continues to be a fixed dollar amount. The good news about that is that the impact on any one of our taxpayers will go down over time. The bad news, not bad news, but the thing we have to keep in mind is that many of our neighbors, to include Littleton and Cherry Creek, are indexed to the School Finance Act. So every time the School Finance Act funding is increased, their MLO funding will automatically increase by a corresponding percentage. So while they won't get much larger, because they're still limited to 25% of the School Finance Act, they will continue to grow a little bit while we will stay about the same. Okay, so what are we doing now? This is the good stuff. I'm so excited to be in front of you talking about an average of a 9.2% increase for our amazing teachers. The revised salary schedules are up, so our teachers have always had access to what the post-MLO schedules would look like. They're all on the same cell that they were on before, but that cell, of course, now has a bigger dollar amount in it. And we're really excited about that. Even the teachers that are not on the schedule, that are above cell, will be receiving a minimum of 7% ongoing increase. Now, I do want to say that we can't keep doing that. We're not going to be able to give people above cell ongoing increases, or we will never be able to be competitive in the lower area. But I'm really excited that 5A allowed us to really honor our veteran teachers. Our veteran teachers are very much needed and very appreciated, and especially now as our experience level in our district has been a challenge as we've lost teachers. So we are very grateful for our veterans, and they will be getting a minimum of 7%. Our classified staff will receive a 9% increase across the board. Our other staff will receive a 7% increase. Even our post-retirement 110 employees are part of the mix, which is also very unusual. A 110 employee is post-retirement. So they've retired. And the way that school districts handle 110 employees is their daily rate that they retired at, is the daily rate that they get paid for their 110 days. And that doesn't change. That just carries on as long as they're a 110. So they wouldn't expect normally to be part of raises, et cetera. And as I stated with our veteran teachers, our 110s are absolute veterans, and they are very, very critical, and their experience is critical. And they are part of the 5A package because we need them. We really, really need them, and we appreciate them. Okay, let's see. We've had substitutes mentioned before, so I want to address substitute teachers. Our current substitute rate is the same as Littleton and Jefferson County. It is not as high as Cherry Creek, but Cherry Creek is very much an outlier. Everyone else is the same. We're very competitive with our substitute teachers. And we have, unlike our other positions, we actually have a very high fill rate for substitute teachers. But we will continue, so we absolutely value and appreciate our substitute teachers. And we will continue to look at creative ways like we had before to incentivize our subs to continue to sub with us so many days a year, et cetera. This past year, we gave subs a stipend if they subbed with us so many days. So we'll continue to look at ways to incentivize and thank our substitute teachers. Okay, the other few things that I want to say about what we're doing, we kept, we kept our recommendations around 5A very simple, because that, that really helps the taxpayers feel like it's very, very transparent. This is as transparent as you can possibly be. But please know for the Board of Education's information that we still have pay challenges in, inside our system in terms of internal pay gaps and ranges being a little off and other things. So in the future, we will be looking to fix those, those gaps and some of those areas, which means that, you know, potentially that raises that come forward won't be quite as simple as a flat 9% across the board. But that was very necessary for the Mill Levy override. Okay, so what is the timeline for the increase? This week, our staff will be receiving an individual email, letting them know what their new compensation level is moving forward and what their new monthly rate would be. I'm going to ask the staff, the board, our community for patience and grace. We have two compensation professionals in Douglas County School District for our 8,600 employees, and they're about to send 8,600 individualized emails. What could go wrong? So we are absolutely, I've already talked to our leaders, they've already talked to their staff. We are asking everyone, if, if you got your email and it's not what you thought it was, please don't jump to, you know, they're, they're not doing it right. Just, just give everyone a minute and let us figure out how to correct it, because there will be mistakes with 8,600. And there's two people that are able to really look at that. So we just need patience and grace as we get that all sorted out. In January of 2024, our employees will receive a retroactive payment. So this raise will be retroactive to the beginning of the contract year, which for our teachers is July 1st, and for our classified staff is August 1st. So that will be retroactive all the way back. So in January, that will be lump sum. If you think about this from an economy perspective, our, our charters are doing the same things with their compensation, not exactly the same way, but very similar. We will be dropping almost $30 million into paychecks in January. Think about just, that's amazing. That's amazing for our teachers and staff. It's also amazing for Douglas County. They're having $30 million hit all at once. So that's basically a half a year of the compensation change. And, and my same caveat applies as to the bullet before, which is those lump sums, something will go wrong. There will be, we don't have a lot of payroll people either. So we're just asking for everyone's patience, but we are really excited to be able to do that. And then their new rate of pay would begin in February. So basically, whatever their monthly amount difference is, they will get that difference for July, August, September, October, November, December, January, all at once in January. And then the new pay rate, rate of pay would begin in February. And of course, for our classified staff, that's six months because they started in August on their contract. And I also want to note for our taxpayers that these compensation changes, once they are made, this ties up the $60 million a year going forward forever. So it's, it's very, very fast how quickly it goes. But in order to maintain these salary levels for our staff, that ties up the 60 million. All right. So what kind of progress have we made in starting pay? Our starting pay has gone from 45,209 to 50,182. So we've finally made it over the $50,000 a year mark. There is something about having that five in the beginning that really, really is amazing. Our educational assistants are now starting at almost $20 an hour. Our bus drivers are up to almost $25 an hour. And you can see, et cetera, et cetera. So we're very excited that our starting pay, this will help us be able to recruit as well. And I think Director Myers referred to this in her comments, but we have literally the morning after the election, our principals started receiving emails from teachers who had left Douglas County and gone to other districts saying, hey, do you have, do you have a spot for me? Because I want to come back. Now I can afford, it's still a pay cut to come back, but I can now afford to come back. And so that's really exciting when we've been dealing with very few applicants to have people reaching out who we know are amazing because they were teaching with us before. All right, safety and security. That is $6 million of 5A. And part of it is for additional school resource officer support across all jurisdictions. And I told our principals this as well. So I feel like I'm just full of caveats tonight. But our law enforcement partners are having as many challenges hiring people as we are. So they, they're, we're working with them, we're meeting with them individually so that we can get our school resource officer count moving. And they will have to post these positions. It'll take a while for them to get applicants, be able to hire someone. There's significant training involved in becoming a school resource officer. So to be realistic, we probably won't see a change in that staffing level on our side until next school year because they, it takes a significant amount of training, recruitment, all of those things to fill those SRO positions. We will be able to provide every elementary school with a campus security specialist pictured on your bottom left. Our campus security specialists have been in our middle and high schools. And now each of our elementary schools will have a campus security specialist. And then those are for our district-run schools. And we will also have an annual security equipment allowance. So that will allow us to replace and modernize things like cameras and radios, all of those things as they wear out. We'll be able to replace them on an ongoing basis without crossing our fingers for a bond. I did tell the leaders, if it involves knocking out walls, that kind of thing, that was part of the bond. And so that's not part of this annual budget. Seems we're knocking out walls. That's different. We are just so grateful to our community. And just on a, on a personal note, I know each and every one of you spent so much time advocating for us, for our school district, and going out and fighting for funding. And we are really grateful. And if you have not watched these yet, I would just love for you to watch these and absorb these because these are videos made by our staff of gratitude. So we're just going to take a couple of minutes to listen.
Hi, we're at Cherokee Trail Elementary. Thank you, Douglas County, for letting us be
Hi, I'm Jennifer Brant, and this is Olivia Holland. And we're teachers here at Thunder Ridge High School.
We want to thank all of the voters in Douglas County for passing 5A. It makes us as educators feel very valued.
We also are excited personally to know that this will help retain some of the great teachers we have here in the district and at Thunder Ridge High School.
So thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Katie, and I teach sixth grade at Meadowview Elementary School. And I just wanted to say a huge thank you to the voters who supported 5A. Personally, for me, it means being able to pay for my son's upcoming surgery while keeping my other son in competitive soccer. I really appreciate the support from the community. I know that increasing your taxes was not something anybody wanted to do, but the fact you chose to do that and support your teachers is amazing. Thank you so much.
Hello, I am Jessica Lou from Skyview Academy, and I wanted to say gracias, thank you for supporting 5A. This will give me the opportunity to return to school and work on my master's degree. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Trey Skelton. I'm an economics and world history teacher at Mountain Vista High School. I just want to send my sincere thanks and gratitude to all the voters of Douglas County that voted to pass 5A. We as teachers really appreciate your support, and we're going to continue to work hard to make sure that all of our students in Douglas County have the best education that they can have. My wife and I are both teachers in the district and have two children that go to school here. We really appreciate having the support and being able to send our kids to such a great school district. Thank you again, and we're going to continue to work hard for you.
For the Sevalia community and voters throughout Douglas County, we appreciate your support.
Hello, Douglas County. My name is Alicia D'Antonio, and I am the proud teacher librarian at Mountain Ridge Middle School. And I get to spend all of my day here in this beautiful space with your students. I'm here after school, and I want to say thank you so much for voting to support 5A. It is going to make such a difference in my life personally. I have three children, and being able to provide them with more activities and fun things that they want to do and enrich their lives in ways that require financial backing, I'm going to be able to do that better now. And that wouldn't be without the support of you. Thank you for supporting our schools and our teachers, and we cannot wait to continue to support your children and your families in Douglas County. Thank you so much.
I want to say from the very bottom of my heart, thank you so much for voting in 5A. I cannot tell you how much it means. I have watched a lot of really amazing teachers leave Douglas County because they could get better salaries farther up north. And being able to start to close this salary gap is going to make a world of difference. And it's going to keep some of our great teachers right here in Douglas County where they belong. So thank you, thank you, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Douglas County.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for 5A.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Douglas County voters.
Thank you, Douglas County voters.
Thank you to Douglas County voters.
Thank you, Douglas County voters.
Sometimes nothing beats just hearing directly from the professionals that were impacted. Oh, we get to hear it again. Okay, so what about 5B? So of course, we were disappointed that 5B fell. But I have to tell you that prioritizing our educators and teachers and staff and being able to retain them is amazing. We will continue to educate our community around the need for 5B. I've had to have some conversations lately about relative funding. The question has been, can't you just kind of find the money in the budget for 5B? So 5B was $484 million, which is about 2/3 of our annual budget. So, so no, we won't be able to pull, you know, enough money out of the couch cushions to build an elementary school. But we will continue to educate our community. We will prioritize any available resources that we have for emergency capital needs. So our resources are all budgeted because we run very tight and very lean. But if there, as the year underruns, along But if there, as the year underruns along the course of the year, we will start to set that aside so that we can handle emergency capital needs that would actually close a building down. So our priority is to make sure that we keep our kids in school in a safe, adequate learning environment to the extent that we possibly can. So we will prioritize things like we can't hate this school anymore or the roof is caving in, whatever it might be. We will continue to address overcrowding with new neighborhood schools, but we do need creative solutions. This, this is a real challenge for us because this problem is not getting smaller, it's getting bigger. So when we look at a potential 5B in the future, there's two more elementaries, there's two more areas that will be on fire. Right now we have three on fire and they're getting, the fires are getting bigger, but there's two fires right behind them, including Ridge Gate East, which is just if you've been by Ridge Gate East lately, we've, we've seen this show before and it is, the houses are going up in massive quantities. And it'll be really hard for us to do a 5B in the future where we ask for five elementary schools. That's probably going to be a real challenge. So we really need to look at some creative solutions in the near future. And at some point, you know, we, staff will recommend to the board of education and as we all debrief together with you, we will have to go back to the voters at some point because we absolutely have to address all of those urgent needs. So as far as next steps with 5B, I'm hopeful that with your approval, we can talk about it some more at the retreat. But for now, please know that what we can address as we are able to look across the course of the year and try to save money is really only those absolutely emergency capital needs. That's what we are able to address, potentially able to address financially if we continue to run really tight and really lean. So just some final thoughts, just thank you. Thank you to our board. Director Meek said it really well when she talked about how the power of people coming together really helped accomplish this. And I am so proud to be a part of a district. I am so proud to work for a board who came together and helped get this done in a really, really challenging year and really fought for our school district and for our staff. And I know on behalf of all of my staff here and all of our staff, our beloved staff throughout the district, we are incredibly grateful to all seven of you for what you have done. And we, I want to reiterate our commitment to the Douglas County community who have just entrusted us with more resources. We are going to continue to work so hard to make you proud. We are going to work really hard to make our Douglas County community proud of our schools. And I think some of our teachers express that and that is something that is really important to us. We're going to make you proud. So that is what I have on 5A and 5B, and I'm more than happy to take your questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I have a question on 5A and the 110 employees. So you said that they would each be getting a three and a half percent over their retirement rate?
Correct.
Is that for the duration? So if next year we have retired teachers that decide to come back, do they automatically get three and a half percent over the top?
No, this is for our 110 teachers that are in our system right now. They will receive a three and a half percent ongoing increase. We do not have the resources to change our policy for 110s going forward or how they're hired going forward. We actually squeezed when we, you know, not given the specific employees that are in our system right now, we were super tight with that 60 million. So there aren't any additional resources. Thank you.
Great, yeah. And then I think the only other thing on 5B, and I think we can talk as a board, like you said at the retreat, but I've heard from the community, some people who voted yes on 5A and no on 5B, a lot of that also had to do with what are we doing with the marrying of schools and kind of wanting a more firm plan moving forward. So hopefully we can talk about that sometime soon too. That's all I had, so Director Ray.
Just a follow up to Director Williams' question on the 110s. So if a 110 is finishing his or her contract in December and signs on to a new 110 contract in January, will they reap the benefit of that 3.5% increase?
I may have to ask Chief Human Resources Officer Amanda Thompson to help me out with that one.
Thank you. Thank you for that question. So if they end in their 110 and then January 1 is when the 110 resets per the state, it's still in the same employment contractual year. So we see them as a continuing employee.
Good.
If that makes sense.
No, that makes perfect sense.
Yep, thank you.
And that's, that's great. A couple of other questions.
Thank you.
When we begin looking at pay increases for the 23-24 school year, which is coming up pretty soon, any kind of foresight in terms of what that might look like?
Yes, thank you for that question, Director Ray. I've actually talked to our school leaders about this. One of the questions that our school leaders had was, well, now that we've gotten, you know, compensation a little better, can you use the increased state funding that will be coming for 5B purposes? And my answer was no, we really can't. And allow me to explain that answer. Across the metro area, as we receive an increase in funding, our neighboring districts will, as they should, use a good portion of that funding to increase salaries. If we don't do that, we undo what our taxpayers just did. And that's, that feels very disingenuous to our taxpayers. So to answer your question, we are expecting an increase in state funding. The governor's budget has been released and we are expecting an increase. We will be increasing salaries based on our available resources. After you've seen all the charts, after we adjust for our increased expenses, changes in enrollment, et cetera, we will use available resources to increase staff pay as we do every single year. And we expected a modest increase going into this year that is about equivalent to what our neighboring districts are doing. Now, my caveat to that is we just presented a great challenge for many of our neighboring districts because suddenly Douglas County is back. So as a result of that, we may find that neighboring districts start to try to increase salaries past their capacity of what they've received in increased funding, which means they may offer slightly larger raises than we will, but we will sort all that out. But I absolutely expect increases for all of our staff going into the 24-25 school year on top of what they just received for the MLO. Thank you for that question.
One more question I have, because I know you are the master at finding one-time dollars, you know, whether it's for unfilled vacancies or merging positions or whatnot. I was just thinking about when you were talking about our security enhancements and that we probably won't be using that until the following school year. And yet the $6 million we're getting is retro to this school year. So we've got this, these monies, if you will, that we're not going to be expending for the 23-24 because we're not going to be able to put security personnel in place immediately. Thoughts about those dollars? Because I know we'll need them then in 23-24 certainly, but we'll still have, I would think, a surplus of dollars that might be one-time dollars to use in other places.
So the ballot question was extremely restrictive. The only place we would be able to use those dollars are either for the purposes of retaining and attracting our staff or for security. So we are restricted in the use of those dollars. But that being said, that is something we will absolutely factor in as we're looking at our budget going into next school year. Our fund balance is about where it should be as far as making sure that we have emergency reserves, et cetera. So adding to it is not my first preference. I'd like to make sure that we're not starving our system and then adding to fund balance and really being thoughtful about where our resources go. As you mentioned, Director Ray, that is something that I'm very passionate about.
So from your perspective then, that money that we're not expending, like we are doing with our teachers, retroactive, that can only be spent on security. So is that, is that what I'm understanding you say?
The ballot question limited it to security and compensation.
Okay.
Right, so the ballot question did not show a division, but it, that we're very, very limited in the use of those dollars. So we'll certainly do some more research for the board, but we want to make sure that we're 100% consistent with the ballot question, of course, to continue to earn the trust of our taxpayers and our voters because we absolutely need that trust.
Great, I think President Peterson
Yeah, for Superintendent Kane, is there a potential, when you analyze the failure of 5B, that we could possibly run a 5B and a 5C in the future? Meaning, would we ever consider splitting out the school build for new school construction from the rest of the bond package? Things like security upgrades, transportation upgrades, the things that fund our annual maintenance budget? So that's the first question.
Thank you for the question, President Peterson. If you're asking what my recommendation would be, I'm not sure, giving, putting me on the spot like this, I'm not sure I would make that recommendation and allow me to explain why. If we put our new neighborhood schools on a separate initiative, my concern would be that while that would earn votes from those areas that would benefit directly from those new neighborhood schools, my concern would be that we would lose other votes where the new neighborhood schools don't have any impact on them. 5B as it's packaged right now has an impact on every single school and every single student across our entire district. So that is my reaction to that suggestion. I don't know if that's helpful or not, but thank you.
Hey, thank you for the answer. And then the second one is around the money for enhanced security such as SROs. It's my understanding that the sheriff's office and our local law enforcement partners may or may not be able, probably not, provide us with the manpower that we may be looking for. Just as you mentioned earlier, they have their own recruiting challenges, salary challenges and things like that. Would consideration be given to taking some of our SSOs, some of our employees that are dedicated, not, not our teachers, not other staff, but our current employees that work for Douglas County that are dedicated security personnel and arming them or elevating them to an SRO-like standard without hiring new personnel? Just allow for additional dedicated security employees that work for the district to be armed as well? Is there anything in policy that you see currently that would prevent that? I'm not suggesting that that's the path forward, but I just want to understand that there would be nothing in current policy that would prevent that option. Is that correct?
That is correct, President Peterson. As you are aware, we currently have a small number of armed patrol staff who are former law enforcement and they aren't, they aren't dedicated to any one of our individual schools, but they help already in terms of filling in where needed and do help out a great deal in our schools. And so in theory that, you know, we could add another person to that staff or whatever in their current capacity and that, in that current job description, that's consistent with policy because we've been doing it for years. Certainly our preference is to get school resource officers. That is a real challenge for our law enforcement partners and something we'll continue to work through with them.
Thank you Superintendent.
Director Ray?
Just a follow up to Director Peterson's comment about the bond. And I really absolutely respect what you've said is that when we, the way we package it is to make sure all communities, all schools, everyone gets some kind of benefit from that. When will we figure out, when will we analyze whether we put too much into that? And whether or not simplifying the bond, maybe not splitting it out like Director Peterson was asking, but did we put too much in it? And then I think the other issue for me certainly is it's hard to get amped up about new carpet, new flooring and an intercom system, right? And so I think you have that disadvantage as well, is that doesn't seem like the thing that people are going to rally and go, yeah, I want my school to have new carpet. So I'm just wondering, when you look at your next steps, and I appreciate, you know, some of the analysis, and again, I would just advocate that we really listened to those voters who said no. Because otherwise I think we just continue to think that more education is going to convince them our way. But have, there's been some initial thoughts Superintendent Kane, as you, as you analyze that question, is it going to be, continue that way, that kind of a package? Or do you think we need to simplify it so it doesn't look like this huge amount of dollars?
Thank you for the question, Director Ray. I think the challenge that we have is it's not getting smaller, it's getting, it's getting significantly bigger. Even if we were only asked for the maintenance part, we've had another, we will have another year at a minimum go by at that $35 million a year price tag for the capital maintenance. So the challenge is that, that it's getting bigger and not smaller. So I think, but I do think we need to not continue to ask for a bigger and bigger package. That is going to be a real challenge. Absolutely, staff is more than willing to analyze those 5,000 voters to the extent that we can, which means probably polling and focus groups. That's how we would be able to reach the folks who voted no on 5B and yes on 5A. And certainly we want to know what their reasoning was and what their feedback was and how we can look at that in the future in terms of what the package looks like and what it includes and what, what our voters value. It's really important to see what our voters value too. So I appreciate the comments. Thank you.
Director Meek?
So how much would our voters have had to pay for 5B if it had passed?
I do not have the numbers off the top of my head right now, but 5B would have, 5B passing would have saved our voters, actually, $4, $4 per 100,000 every year. But 5B not passing saved our voters 1150 for each 100,000 in home value. So by not passing 5B, our voters decreased their taxes by 1150 per 100,000 in home value. And by passing 5B, that would have been a savings of four instead of 11.
So that's partly because of bonds retiring, right? Is that the right phrase, retiring bonds or?
Yes, yes, retiring and restructuring.
Okay. How long is a typical bond?
I am going to have CFO Schleisner stand up here instead of me constantly looking at her to nod her approval at my answer, so.
Instead of my sign language behind her. They're usually about 30 years and it's a combination of paying off the debt and the increased population, which spreads that debt payment across.
Thank you. I thought it was probably around 30 years. So it's kind of like a mortgage, right? And so I went back 30 years, I'd be 1993, I believe. If I remember correctly, our district was growing by about 2,000 students a year at that point in time. And we were putting up many, many buildings. So I'm wondering, is there a bond retiring schedule? I think we've talked about that before. It would seem like we have a lot of opportunity in front of us if we look at how can we structure putting buildings in place where we're not asking for an increase in the current level of taxes?
Yeah, that's a great question. We do have the schedule currently built that has automatic step downs in it. So that's a drop down in the principal and interest payments every three years, I believe it is. We have refunded or refinanced everything possible that we have out there. So there's nothing left to refinance, it's just waiting for that debt schedule to pay out, probably for another 20 years until we have another chance to start calling them again.
And just to add to that, something CFO Schleisner mentioned is that our, the more that we have more citizens, similar to 5A, the more that we have more citizens, that debt payment is spread across more households, which means that it will naturally decrease from that as well. So that actually helps us with the step down. And Director Meek, I wish I had it handy, but I displayed a chart last August that showed the pattern of the number of dollars that our bond has cost our taxpayers. And it is significantly lower today than it was in 1993 when we were, as you mentioned, building schools like crazy. So really the pattern of what our bond has cost taxpayers has continued to go down, which as you point out, presents some opportunity to be able to look at those step downs and how we can use those.
Okay. Thank you. Director Meek? Director Meek.
So back to 5A and additional funding coming in from the state, which all districts will receive. Would you say that we're at an advantage maybe because some other districts are trying to figure out how to replace federal pandemic dollars that are going away, and that might even put us in a more favorable situation?
Thank you for that question, Director Meek. My answer is maybe yes. You're right, a lot of other districts used ESAR dollars or those federal dollars for the pandemic to support ongoing positions, and so when those dollars cut off, they either have to make some hard decisions about layoffs or try and find a way to support those positions ongoing at the cost of raises and salaries. Douglas County School District is not in that position. We did not generally use ESAR funds for ongoing positions, so we do absolutely have an advantage in that regard. We'll have to see how that shakes out. You should expect to see us back early this year like we did last year to talk about potential raises because we can't take anything for granted. We want to continue to be ahead of the market in terms of posting and how much money we're able to post positions for, which means looking at raises much earlier than perhaps we often do.
And so I just want to point out, I believe President Peterson was out of line when he spoke for the board, asking for charter schools to reach out. I think the board hasn't discussed asking for charter school applications to be submitted. And so I just want to call this out because I think, you know, we need to be very careful when we're speaking, that we're speaking either individually or for the board. And I don't remember having any conversations asking for charter school applications. And I think sometimes we lose trust with our community who are going to start saying, well, you know, you didn't want the bond to pass, this was all a ploy. I mean, these are, things start circulating if we're not really careful with how we speak as board directors. And I think, obviously, we want to talk about whether charters are the right solution for certain situations and regions and everything, but we haven't had any of those conversations. So I just want to caution us because I think we need to be really careful. We're at a point in time where we really need to be focused on bringing people together and not creating confusion in our community.
Yeah, I took it more as he was just saying we would consider it if people put in a good package, but perhaps we just interpreted it differently. So, anything, anybody else? No? Great, all right.
Thank you.
We will go on to, yeah, I'm sorry.
Director Williams? If I could respond since I was called out. That was exactly my intent. We have annual applications on a cycle, and my point was to say if there are any applications, they should be absolutely tight, which the board meeting at CD that I referenced last week was not the case. I'm not interested in, well, if anybody wants to put in an application, I think this board, seven people have a very good track record of looking at, considering, evaluating, and approving very good packages. And I think we also have a very good record as a board of frankly rejecting replications and new packages that don't meet muster. So it was clearly, simply to say that there is an annual cycle, 5B in pass. If you're a charter that's interested in applying on the annual cycle, as usual, please put in an application and the board will consider it at that time. So that's it, just for clarity.
Awesome, thank you. All right, moving into policy governance, number 21, consideration of new policy DFD debt management, the second reading.
I move that we adopt new policy DFD as written.
Second? Great, any discussion? Cool.
So I appreciate the new language that was added from the first reading, so thank you. And I don't think we received a legal memo on it or anything like that, but could you just speak to that new language?
Yeah, sure. So, yeah, we added page three, some wording in red. Can you hear me now? Okay, that's better, thank you. Okay, so on page three, we added some wording in red, and that just clarifies our current practice of what we do when we do have COPs with charter schools. We currently get their revenue from the state, and we pass that money through to them on a monthly basis. So just like we do with other purchase services, we just reduce it by that principal and interest payment, and then we pass the remaining amount through to the charter school. This is wording that was given to me by Kim Crawford, our bond counsel, and so this has been approved by her.
Are we using COPs right now?
We have a couple outstanding, but there's none with charter schools. Those have been paid off. It's just a really small amount that's left.
All right, well, we will go ahead and take roll then. Meek.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Page.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Weiniger.
Aye.
Great, passes seven.
Thank you.
Zero for DFD, number 21. Onto 22, proposed revisions to policy KEC, public complaints about learning resources. A 10-minute presentation? Maybe not?
My apologies. No, there's definitely not a 10-minute presentation.
Yeah, sorry.
I'm so sorry. It is, it is literally one sentence that is being proposed as a revision, and we have talked about it briefly in the past, and I will allow Mr. Reynolds to do a not 10-minute presentation to explain that one sentence.
But you have up to 10 minutes, just so you know.
Perfect, thank you for clarifying. I was not prepared for 10 minutes. A few pieces of context regarding this particular policy, which actually is connected to the previous conversations that we did have regarding our textbooks and novels. So our parents have several different options in policy for questions or concerns about learning resources. It begins with IJC. IJC really directs the parents to go back to the classroom and address the concern at the closest level to that instruction. So IJC really solidifies that portion of it, which is in alignment to other policies and procedures that you all have when there's a general concern, is that it's handled at the classroom level, and that could be both formally and informal. It doesn't have to be a formal complaint, it could be just a concern. The next is we have IMBB, which is a formal complaint against required instruction. That's another option that parents have specifically within policy governance. So both of those outline policies and procedures and processes for parents to be able to ask questions or have a concern about a learning resource. This particular policy, KEC, is after the concern is not addressed at the local level. This is beyond when IJC kicks in and you have a parent or someone that's concerned about a learning resource, it's not resolved at the school level. This is what this policy is in regards to. The changes regarding KEC are really in alignment to the recently revised policy KE. The goal here is to align the language with KEC, to align with the current revisions that you all made with KE. So it's one sentence within this policy that really is aligning back to KE, which you all just recently approved.
Great, any questions? Director Ray.
Two questions. So, one, Mr. Reynolds, can you just recap the rationale behind the reason in KE as well, that we wanted to specifically state that district people, whether that's students, residents, or whatnot, would have the ability to make this challenge as opposed to the entire world beyond Douglas County?
Certainly, I'll try to recall back to the conversation with KE because these two were related. So KE, the desire for KE was to make sure that our school community's voices are really being heard, and this is in alignment to that as well, to clarify our school community's concern regarding our learning resources.
Thank you. And the final question, and I didn't have the time to go back and do some parallel checking, but I know in this policy, we reference it as a challenged materials committee. Is that, is that parallel to the language in all our other policies that talk about a committee that will consider challenged resources?
Great question. The language with the challenged resource committee is actually in the regulation, which if this is approved, then we will make adaptations and modifications to that regulation to reflect that change.
Perfect, thank you. I move that we accept the revisions to policy KEC.
I'm sorry, I think, is President Peterson holding his hand up?
Yeah, it's difficult, I know when you're showing. The only, the only suggested change I may have, and thank you, Mr. Reynolds, for the explanation, and I can't tell if you're looking at the proposed revisions on the screen or not, but the first red part where it says, "District Parents or Guardians," I'm wondering if that shouldn't be written for clarity to say "Parents/Guardians of District Students" because we're going to have, or we have a sufficient number of parents that may live outside the district geographic boundaries that have their students choiced into our schools, sometimes across county lines. I believe that's the intent, but I just thought if someone's reading this, that we may possibly make that one change to say, "And a fair procedure for Parents/Guardians of District Students," and then keep everything else the same. I don't know if that's confusing to other board members, but I believe it might be misread. Just open up to the board for discussions.
I concur with adding District Students after, of District Students after District Parents/Guardians. Director Meek.
Yeah, I think the recommendation was changing it so it says Parents/Guardians of District Students, so the district goes away.
Perfect.
I concur, I think that definitely clarifies.
And then I would, if that's fine and there's no further discussion, I would motion that we approve policy KEC with that one revision.
Great, do I need to read it again, or does everyone?
Yes.
So I have, instead of citizens, it says Parents/Guardians of District Students. District Students, District Employees, and District Residents.
I'll second the motion that Director Peterson made with that revision.
Great, all right, Meek.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Page.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Weiniger.
Aye.
Great, passes seven to zero. Onto number 23, where we have proposed revisions to policy BG-E, policy process of district policies. This will be our first reading.
Yes, thank you. We've been talking about this for a while to make sure that this document is caught up with our policy revisions and our policy library generally. So General Counsel Clemesh put this together and is available should there be any questions on the document.
That's right, questions?
Does anybody have any questions?
I do.
Director Ray.
Thank you. Legal counsel Clemesh for the work that was done on this, and it really does start helping clarify. Just a reminder that exhibit is different than policy, and exhibit is really an example of the work, and it's really intended to be more of a working document anyway. One of the, I guess, one of the, I'm trying to, if it's a question or a concern, I may start with a question. I noticed that you removed a lot of the italicized policies, and just to kind of give a history of that, the original document had those policies italicized based on the audit, the external audit that was done to give information to the board of policies that they felt needed to be considered. And so we created this document for that purpose, kind of as a placeholder. So those italicized, like for instance, AD, school district mission, that we knew that we needed to create a policy with our school mission stated in it. So I guess my question is, was there a reason that you deleted all of that? And I would just like to give you that opportunity.
Thank you for the question, Director Ray. The purpose of doing this, in light of the fact that we are referring to this now when we look at policies and whether or not there has been authority delegated by the board to the superintendent to adopt a policy, was essentially to have a document in place or a policy in place where the board's authority to delegate authority to the superintendent is accurately represented. So it's a little bit different purpose than being a guidance document because the board actually adopted this in April of 2019 in terms of delegating the authority to the superintendent. It was their intention to do that. And so I have deleted the little note section or recommended that the board considering, consider deletion of the note, which talks about the italicized policies or while they're there. And in many instances, I didn't leave the italics in for policies that have been adopted by the board that were recommended for board consideration. And I think at this juncture, we're in tandem with this, internally, our administrative leadership team, our cabinet, putting together a chart of those policies which we are considering to bring to the board or that the board might adopt. But I think this policy, right now, as a policy adopted by the board, is intended to be a solid representation of those policies which presently exist or where there is serious consideration for reserving it for a board policy. Certainly, the board can adopt any other policy it wishes to adopt, and then this documentation or policy which documents the policies we have in place would be revised at that time. So that's the rationale. I think it provides clarity and purpose for this. I also want to point out that this policy was originally intended to be a superintendent file policy, and I think it was at one of the board meetings when there was a discussion about, or comments being made, that this should be considered a board file policy. That way, we don't have to include in each board policy a delegation that the superintendent has the authority to pass a regulation or take action to, with respect to a regulation or an implementation policy. So that was my rationale for doing it. I also want to point out that it looks like there's a lot of red on this policy revision, but some or a lot of the red merely adds the exact title of the policy that we have in our policies as compared to Casby's recommended policies, which at times were inconsistent. So the goal here was that there be consistency with respect to a reflection of our policies. The other thing I want to point out in response to your question is that there was action taken to, on April of 2019, and at that time, there were policies placed in the superintendent file column, and they're still presently in the board file column at this time. So if the board passes this policy as written with these designations, then subsequent to that, we'd actually take formal action to repeal all those board file policies and make a notation that the superintendent has adopted the policies as written and designate that in the history. So we have that in place.
And thank you for that, for that explanation, and I think that's probably, I appreciate that you were looking at it from a lens of what policies are to be delegated to the superintendent. That's really what I heard, is that that's really the primary focus of why we're doing this work or we're considering the first reading. I would just say- I would just say, as the old timer on on the dais, is that I would hate to see us lose the work of the board column. Certainly, Mrs. Clemesh did the right thing, because that should be the focus, so that the superintendent has the clarity, and we clean up our administration manual in terms of whether it's a board file or superintendent file. But I would tell you that I still believe that the italicized documents or the italicized policies in our column are critical, that we don't lose that. I mean, we paid additional dollars of resources to have that audit and to have that provided for us. And while I appreciate Mrs. Clemesh's explanation that she really wanted to reflect on current policy or policies that were for sure being created, I would I would just, I would be, I would have a hard time losing the work that was done, because I think it really is a placeholder and a reminder for us to have to really make sure that those are policies that we consider for either creation or future revisions. So so I would just suggest that we be careful, that we don't only look at it from the superintendent lens, but we look at it as from our lens. What is what needs to be on our to do list as far as policy creation? And school district mission's a perfect example, you know, one that is required, that has language in the mission that's required. I mean, that's, and that one, we're already paying attention to by asking community for feedback. So I so I think as you go through these, I would really encourage you before second reading to really ask the question, is that something seriously that we're going to be working on this coming school year? And if so, I would advocate that you leave that, just like Ms. Clemesh did on several of the superintendent policies, she would write reserved for future action or future enactment or reserved for future policy, like record retention E H B. I think that's a very appropriate thing to do, because obviously, she knows that's something that the cabinet's going to work on. So anyway, that's my initial overview of two cents worth about not losing the work and not losing the resource that we paid to make that work possible.
Director Meek?
Yeah, I was going to look at the mission statement one as an example, too, just because, you know, we're required to reflect safety for students and staff as a priority in the mission statement, according to CRS. I mean, there's a lot of statutory requirements that fall into our policies, right? And so what I'm hearing Director Ray say, this document was helping to track where we are with policy reviews as well as, so it feels like there's two purposes for this document. Does the, and this is a question for Director Ray, does the policy review need need to be reflected? Is this the right place for that to be reflected?
Yeah, it's a it's a good question, if I may respond. I mean, I just, I I think it was helpful. I know for me, as the president, to have this as kind of my working document as we are looking at future policies that we need to consider as a board. I don't, I mean, it's, I don't think it has to go in exhibit. It could certainly go somewhere else. But I think for the transparency for our community, it's important for them to see that we have certain topics that we're working on as well. So to me, it's just helpful to have it all in one place. I don't think it has, I don't think there's a requirement, certainly. This is something that we came up with to really delineate between superintendent authority and board authority. So I don't think it's it's a requirement by no means, but I think keeping things in one place is helpful.
Director Meek? And then I think Director Peterson.
Go ahead. I just wanted to, and thank you again for this discussion, because there was, there's a lot of considerations put into generating these revisions or proposed revisions for the board's consideration. But I do want to remind the board that at our summer work session, we did share with the board an analysis that we did with respect to reviewing our policies at sections I, J, I believe H and K or L, to identify, because we wanted to carefully look to see if we were missing anything that was legally required. So I want to make sure that you all know that that was a consideration, because certainly we, in our legal department, want to make sure that we're including things in this list that are legally necessary. Not saying that we might have missed something, but we do have differing numbers. The CASB policies don't align, as we've talked about before, in terms of our lettering systems in a consistent way with theirs. And there are many policies that we have, which may be, may have been identified by CASB as having been legally required, but that language was contained elsewhere in other policies. So those considerations were taken into account when we made these recommended revisions to the board. So thank you for the comments, and I appreciate the the questions and the concerns with respect to considering the work that's been done by CASB. We have considered that. We've carefully looked at those issues. I certainly also appreciate the merits of placeholders for certain things that may be something the board wants to look into in the future.
Thank you. Director Meek?
I was wondering, I'm sorry.
All right. Thank you. So I think my other thought I just wanted to throw out there, you know, one of the board's primary roles is setting policy, right? I mean, that's why we're here. And we're going to have two new board members coming in, and this can feel so overwhelming. And I'm just wondering if really setting time at the retreat, if, I know probably the retreat agenda is going to grow and grow and grow, but I but I do think grounding our entire newly configured board in understanding some of this is really essential. And, you know, I kind of almost want to table a first reading on a document like this to allow the incoming board to use it partly as an education tool and to learn and contribute. So that was just a thought that I also wanted to share.
Sorry, hold on. Director Peterson has been waiting, and then you can go, Director Ray.
Thank you, Vice President Williams. I listened to the conversation between Directors Ray and Meek, and I was going to bring up a similar comment. I appreciate Director Ray's not wanting to lose the institutional knowledge to to some degree, his eight years on the board, and during my time on the board, he has been a lot of that institutional knowledge. And as he, as his time sunsets, I would like to not lose some of that. I would maybe propose that we consider at the retreat, having a B G E and a B G E, too. I'd like the cleanliness that Counsel Clemesh has put in to revising this document or cleaning it up. So maybe there would be a separate exhibit that could list the potential policies or things that we do not have that we should consider. But I actually like them being separate, because I think it's much clearer to people looking at it, these are current policies and current delegations of responsibilities between the board and the superintendent, and then separate exhibit for here's some things that we don't have that we may consider, just as a placeholder, because as Director Ray mentioned, exhibits aren't exactly policies, they're examples. So I think that that would be beneficial. I also agree with Director Meek. I really appreciate the legal department's work to clean up B G E, but I also think that this is something, the timing here is actually good. This is just the first reading. People are looking at it. I need to go back through this as one director and and really do a lot of cross referencing and a lot of work, but I think this would be a perfect topic for discussion at the retreat coming up on the 6th of December. And then obviously, we would have a later second reading, discussion and vote on on what to do with B G E, but I think that's an excellent topic and discussion as we bring new folks on.
So I I'm good putting it on the retreat if everybody else is okay with putting it on the retreat agenda, and that way, new board members can talk. But yes, Director Ray?
Yeah, no, I, a couple of things. I think it, I think Director Meek brought it up, is that this is the board's work, is to is to really set policy. And I think it's important to remember that there are policies that Mrs. Clemesh monitors and watches and revises and recommends that are those policies that are necessary in terms of legal compliance, but there are also policies that are reflective of board priorities, reflective of things that we want to clarify that don't necessarily have to be put in place because of legal compliance, it's just we want to be able to inform the system. So she and her department do a fabulous job at keeping us compliant and and watching those policies, but don't, I would just ask not to narrow your mindside in thinking that the only policies that need to be looked at are those that are legally mandated, because that is not what our work's about. Our work is to help clarify to the system what the values are for the system to operate well. So I would just put that as a reminder. The second thing is, I hear Director Peterson in terms of differentiating or maybe doing two different policies, I also, and I also hear Director Meek saying this looks pretty overwhelming, but I also like the fact that we can parallel and see that when we set a policy like A C, that then there's an accompanying regulatory policy right next to it. So it's it's kind of nice to be able to see that the superintendent has an operational policy that complies with the policy that we set. But that's your work as far as whether you do two B G E exhibits or whether you maintain that. I also agree that this work is great work to be done at a retreat. And there was one other, oh, the other point I would make for Director Meek's reassurance is that you can have as many readings of a policy or a recommendation as you want. So I don't think we need to necessarily postpone the first reading. This is a first reading. You can have second, third, fourth, fifth readings. You don't, you don't have to feel pressured that the next reading has to be the one that you enact. So I would just tell you to feel free to slow down and enjoy your next retreat.
All right. Without further ado, we'll move to number 24, Board Selection of Voting Delegate and Alternates for Colorado Association of School Boards 2023 Business Meeting. So much like we, I guess, appointed me to go to the last all-day legislative session that they had, they have a, I'll just read it. The D C S D's boards select a delegate, will participate in a democratic process at CASB's annual business meeting in December by voting for representatives on the CASB Board of Directors and addressing any other legislative resolutions or organizational business items before the membership. So the, this would be pretty much the same thing, appointing someone to attend the December 7th meeting that they have there, and just obviously keeping in mind the legislative priorities that we put forth as a board last year. Director Meek?
Yeah, I think they do have another big topic, which is reviewing some bylaw changes for CASB. I don't know if anyone has had a chance to review what those proposed bylaw changes are.
I have not.
Would you like me to update everyone on what those look like?
Sure.
It's been a hot topic. They pulled together a task force. There was a lot of debate. It's been over a year, probably, looking at how the membership is handled, how different areas are structured in their bylaws. They've not updated the bylaws in quite a while. So they've made several different recommended changes to improve communication transparency and member engagement. What I would say the major change, they're looking at changing their officers for their board. So CASB has a 23-member board. They represent 12 regions plus large districts. One of the changes is to just call it 13 regions, because it's 13 separate regions or large districts now, that select a certain number of board directors that are elected at the at the annual business meeting. So that's the meeting that's coming up in December. So in the past, and I think for as long as CASB's been in existence, they would have a president, president-elect, and past president. And so a president-elect would be elected, they'd roll into the presidency the second year, then they'd roll into the past president the third year. That's really how the other association or how CASE does it as well. So the major change is that to help ensure some more, some better continuity in leadership, they're changing it so the president is elected as president, and they can rerun for two additional terms. The vice president would run for vice president, and they could be elected for two additional terms. And so they're creating also a secretary treasurer role responsible for the coordination of communication to members, responsible for the maintenance of documents and records, and chairing their finance committee. So they also have a finance committee. So I would say that really is the most significant change to the bylaws. Other changes are more just, you know, changing annual service participation fee to annual dues, feeling like dues make more sense. So so anyway, I think we, as a board, should probably discuss whether we support those bylaw changes and, you know, select a delegate. And, I mean, I'd be happy to be the delegate if the board wants that, but I also think whoever is voting should probably be able to reflect our board's position on those bylaw changes.
So just a quick question. How long is the current term for board members?
To be a CASB board member, it's a three-year term.
So then people would then be able to run two additional three-year terms?
So to be an officer, so if you wanted to run for president, you would run for president, and then you can run again year two and run again a third year for that role.
Question?
Sure. Go ahead, Director Ray.
Is there a, is there a deadline when you have to notify CASB regarding your delegate?
Yes, I believe it was November 22nd.
Okay.
Yes.
Maybe just one other thing I would say. So I mentioned it was a 23-member task force, so it represented people from every region across the state, and I think they met nine times or something. There's Zoom sessions recorded. I dialed into a session, you know, to to learn more, but it sounds like it was a very transparent process, and they came to consensus on these recommended changes.
President Peterson?
Yeah, just to address why this is on this meeting, yes, there is a deadline for school boards to discuss and nominate a delegate from the board to CASB. And unfortunately, that is prior to our next special meeting where we would swear air new delegates, so we'll have to get this done ideally at this meeting. That being said, the retreat on December 6th occurs prior to the CASB conference. So again, this would be a great short discussion for the board retreat, for the newly sworn-in directors and all directors to to kind of have a discussion on whoever is the delegate to CASB, what the issues are and what their position might be to reflect the board consensus.
Yeah, I actually like that idea that we would talk as a new board of seven members about our positions, and then whoever the delegate is on the 7th would be able to relay those. So I think that's a good idea. Does anybody want to?
I would make a motion that we select Director Meek to serve as our voting delegate, certainly given her background knowledge and that she's already researched the bylaw changes, and that there will be an opportunity for the entire board to have a discussion about their preferences or their voice at the December 6th, as Director Peterson mentioned. So my nomination is for Director Meek to serve in that delegate role.
And I will second that.
All right. Motion. Motion by Ray to nominate Director Meek. I assume you accept the nomination? Okay. Seconded by Myers, and we'll go ahead and take rolls. So Meek?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Page?
Aye.
Peterson?
And I will be out of town at that time, so I will vote yes for Director Meek.
Ray?
Aye.
Williams? I'll just say that I completely support that, as long as we can come to a consensus as a board at the meetings, and then I would just say the same thing that I offered to do is to, you know, abstain if you don't feel you can speak for the entire board. So I'll be an aye. Weineger?
Aye.
Great. Motion passed, seven to nothing. All right, and on to the last item, Board of Education reports. So we'll go ahead and start with President Peterson.
First, I'd like to thank Vice President Williams for chairing the meeting this evening. I believe this is the first meeting I've missed, and Vice President Williams did an excellent job, so thank you for that. Some administrative things coming up. The next meeting of the Board of Education will be a special session meeting scheduled for November 30th, and that will be to swear in our new directors, and then we will also vote for offices. So we have some statutory requirements we cannot meet and do that prior to certification by the county clerk and recorder, but then we have a limited amount of time in which we must seat and swear in directors. So that will happen on Thursday, November 30th, and again, that will follow with new elections of board officers. Following that is discussed often tonight. We have the board retreat on the 6th of December, and that is just prior to the CASB retreat. We've done that the last few years, is leverage the space to have a board retreat and then allow directors to flow into the CASB session after that. And then finally, the next regularly scheduled board meeting will be on December 12th, and that will be our only meeting in December as a board, a regular board meeting due to the holiday period. Agenda planning for all three of those, the special meeting, the board retreat, and the regular meeting on the 12th of December will occur on this Thursday, 16th of November. Unfortunately, I was unable to be at the reception earlier, so I just wanted to echo my appreciation for both Directors Page and Director Ray for their service on the board. Director Page took incredible courage to step up, especially given some of the politics of a multi-director race, but you served admirably. Really appreciate your patience, your prudence, and your ability to step in and serve on this board and make all your decisions and representations in the best interest of our staff and our students. So thank you to Director Page. For Director Ray, you have been, as I mentioned earlier, with PGE. You have been the institutional knowledge on this board. Your service for eight years has been ridiculously commendable. I think we should give you a severance package of three times your annual board pay, so I'd be happy to motion and approve that, but thank you, thank you so much for your eight years on this board and your dedication as a board member to the students, to staff, and to the county, and obviously for all your years previously, opening many schools, facilities. You obviously have had a lifetime of service to this district, and I'd like to personally thank you for that. Last bit of items, I did have the pleasure of attending the Veterans Day Ceremony at American Academy Castle Pine, so I'd like to thank the executive director, Steve Kalella, all the staff and students for having myself there. I actually, there was a bit of a safety issue. I was wearing my uniform, but no buttons flew off and no children were injured, and I shaved for the first time in three years. So it was a pleasure to come out to represent not just the board, but to represent all our veterans here in Douglas County and speak to that group, so I thank them. With that, I will be back in town for the 30 November special meeting, and I look forward to seeing everyone there. Over to you, Vice President Williams.
Thank you for that. All right. So I am blessed enough to be on the Douglas County Gifted Education Advisory Council, and they had a meeting a couple weeks ago, and they are looking for new members. So if you have a child that is either newly found to be in the gifted education area, or if they've been in there, we need you and would love for you to be a part of our advisory council. We're also looking for any high school students that are, also have been found to be gifted. So I have asked that we include in our across-the-board email that goes out to the entire district for a link to be included for you to go ahead and apply to join that council. They meet pretty much just once a quarter, so it's not a huge time commitment that way, but they do really great work, and they are trying to really rally and get some involvement and engagement from their gifted individuals. So that will be coming out with our across-the-board. As Superintendent Kane mentioned earlier, I had the honor and privilege of being able to go see Frozen on Friday night, and I took my entire crew with me, and my daughter, I think, sang every song from the beginning to end, and it was fabulous. Like, I have been to plays at different high schools, and each time I'm going, oh my gosh, this county has so much talent. And so just a big shout out to everyone, but my husband, who played the violin and, from what I hear, not so well as a child, was very, very, very impressed that the orchestra played the entire time. So it wasn't just, they didn't just come out for the songs, I mean, they were there the entire time. So what a great show. And so if you have the opportunity to go see any of our shows throughout the district, I would encourage you to do so. It's quite the treat. Then, community engagement that Director Meek and I have been working on is November 29th, that we will be meeting with the charter schools. We have also invited the board-elect directors to come as well, so that they can be a part of that evening. We look forward to doing that. That will be at the Legacy Campus at 6:00 PM, I believe. Anyway, so that is that, and then I just wanted to say thank you, Director Page, for stepping up and bringing a very thoughtful presence to the board. I so appreciate that you stepped in the line of fire when not everybody would do that. So just thank you for being willing to sit up here for the months that you were here and fight for our kids and our teachers and our staff. So I appreciate that. And then Director Ray, we have not always agreed, but what I know in my heart is that while we didn't have the same way of getting there, we always agreed that we needed to put students and teachers and staff first. So I appreciate that so much about you, and I appreciate that you volunteered your time for eight consecutive years. It is a, it's a long time, and I know it hasn't always been easy, so I appreciate that. So thank you very much. And then obviously, thank you again to our taxpayers and community for passing 5A. Just huge thank you. And I will pass it on to Director Meek.
So once again, I'll say thank you to our taxpayers as well. I heard from so many staff members that the staff meetings on Wednesday morning were incredible, and smiles were just glued onto everyone's faces, and I am very, very, very happy for our system. And again, I think it's because we all chose to make that happen and work really hard. So, and our voters, thank you. We had LRPC the day after the election, and, you know, they are already talking about, okay, we need to analyze voter trends, can we get precinct results, can we compare this, can we compare? I mean, they're ready and just waiting to support our district in any way possible. And so I think our conversations probably at the retreat will lead to, you know, additional ideas for how we might enlist that amazing committee. And to see their appreciation for Board Director-elect Geiger sitting in the audience, they may need to hire a couple of people to fill his seat, but that was really nice to see. Cimarron Middle School Veterans Day, you know, if only our entire community could go and attend that event. It is incredible. Director Myers and I have been there for two years now, and it truly is, I was actually in a school district on the Eastern Plains today, and they were talking about it. They were talking, because they have a sibling who teaches there, and they were talking about that Veterans Day, and I said, I know, it's incredible. I know an email went out on the vision and mission statement, and feedback's being solicited on that. I do think it's probably generating questions, like, what's happening? Because not everyone watches our board meetings. And I know I have not, as a board liaison, had an opportunity to bring it up in our board committee meetings, but remember, we said we would solicit feedback from our board committees? So I was just curious if any other board directors have had that conversation with their committees? And if not, we need to get going on that.
Yeah.
I was just curious. No, I see a lot of head shaking. Okay. Director Page, thank you for stepping up. I mean, it is not easy or fun necessarily, but when people have convictions to do what they believe is right in their heart, it's the right thing to do. So thank you for doing that. And Director Ray, you know, I just, the amount of knowledge, I mean, not just eight years, but the 33 years in the system, and when I talked about leaving a legacy, I mean, just all of the students and families that you've touched, and then all of this binder stuff over the past eight years has made a difference. So thank you again, and you'll be missed.
Director Meek? I mean Myers, sorry.
As Director Meek stated, we went to the Cimarron Veterans Day second year in the row. I wasn't going to miss it. Wanted to bring my grandchildren, but then President Peterson and they had something at Academy Charter, so they wanted to stay there. But I did think of guests that I could bring next year. We had a SAG meeting, well, it was just the kids, our officers had, we did a little celebration. They were just so good. Homemade cakes, some dip, nice comments, and I reserved, I didn't speak that night because I wanted to speak tonight about Director Ray. And so Director Ray and I, the very first time, I guess, I really met you was at the D.C. Oaks graduation, when I was newly elected in, and we were there, and just the warm welcome, and thank you. Just, I can honestly say, and this might just be on my part, but I believe Director and I developed a good fondness for each other, and talking and kidding with each other and all kinds of things. And then I want, I never report on REMZL, which is the Rocky Mountain School of Expeditionary Learning, because we will be terminating in June of 2024. We gave our 18-month, but the real reason I brought that up is because the day after we were sworn in, Director Ray kind of tricked me into taking that committee. Yeah, 7:00 AM in the morning down at Evans and Holly. It's only once a month, but I'm going to just let Director Ray know, I let him know that I thought of him every time I drove to that meeting, and I will continue to think of you till June when I'm finished. But just sitting next to him and looking at his notebook and trying to look at notes in case I wanted to steal anything or anything like that, but I've just really enjoyed, and as an educator also, you know, it's about the kids. This job is about the kids. Thank you, thank you. And Director Page, thank you so much for stepping up, stepping up for me at a time you stepped in for a committee for me, and your values and your morals and bringing your expertise to this board, and I want to thank you. And again, taxpayers, thank you. My goodness, it's just, I was at Sam's getting gas, and there was a car in front of me with the 5A, 5B, and I got in, and it was the day after a conversation, and she was a teacher, and said, thank you. Then I had somebody honking behind me, an old past teacher that said, thank you, I can't believe you're doing that job on the board, because we served as librarians together. But just the excitement out there, and you can feel it, and knowing that we are on the road to coming back. So thank you, Douglas County.
Director Weineger?
We have FOC meeting on Thursday, and there is an agenda item to discuss 5A, 5B, so I'll give you updates on that in the next one. And then just echo everyone's sentiments, thank you to Director Page, thank you, Director Ray, for your time spent on the board, and just a big welcome to Mr. Geiger and Ms. Thompson. And I hope that this new board we have going forward is respectful, and when we disagree, we avoid hostility, and we can just keep moving forward for our kids and our school district, and, yeah, I think that's all the updates.
Great. All right, Director Page?
All right. What to say, we've got five months versus 96 months. It's a, you know, it's almost equal in terms of our experience here on the Douglas County School Board, but it's certainly been, even in the short time, it's been a journey, and really, I think, one that makes me certainly appreciate, you know, what it takes to run, you know, a district of this size, and the fact that, you know, to a man or woman on this dais, you deal with the opinions of hundreds of thousands of people, roughly half of which don't agree with you, but you're here doing the work. And so it's given me, you know, great insight and respect for each one of you up here, because what I've experienced in five months, and if Director Ray's experienced it over the course of eight years, I mean, that's, it's a lot, and it's a lot from a majority of people who would not step up here and do this. There's a lot of Monday morning quarterbacking going on out there. So thank every one of you for doing the work. And, you know, when this all came about, you know, in April, and then going through the process of being appointed, that's what it was for me. It was, how can I serve, you know, do the work? And then came to understand, okay, I think I'm willing to, you know, do this for a long term, and, you know, the cards didn't turn out for me, so again, to Mr. Geiger, congratulations, and, but I know who you are, and I expect good things, because I'll be watching. Brad and I, we worked together for, you know, a couple of years on the LRPC, and apparently, since I live in the Highlands Ranch feeder area, there've already been people like, hey, you know, Brad's seat's going to be coming open on this committee soon. But, you know, thanks for everyone, you know, the people that did vote for me. Again, this is not about me, it's about what we're doing for the district, and I'm so glad that 5A passed, and like I said, I'll be around, I'll be still being active. We got a lot of work to do in terms of what needs to be done with 5B, you know, maybe figuring out some creative solutions, but it's been a humble privilege and a pleasure to be here and share this dais for the last several months with all of you. And Director Ray, enjoy not feeling the pressure, because, you know, like I said, eight years, you know, you've done yeoman's work, and thank you for that, and thank you to everyone for supporting me, and signing off.
All right. Director Ray, you're up.
All right. Thank you, Director Williams. Just first of all, a couple of pearls of wisdom.
Just first of all, a couple of pearls of wisdom. Before I get to the pearls of wisdom, though, I want to just echo what Director Myers talked about with SAG. Jake Oliver made me a carrot cake from scratch, because in a conversation that we had had, he knew that I had, and he has, a passion for that particular dessert. And I got to tell you, when I walked in and saw this carrot cake, and he had a recipe, and if you know Jake, he's very analytical and very detail-oriented, but I'll tell you, it was just a, it was really a special moment. And for me, it was a full-circle moment, because as I shared at the reception, I got it into this for the kids, and to have time with kids was really the full-circle moment for me, to see that they were so thoughtful and such incredible leaders. But pearls of wisdom. So a couple things, you will have the oath of office and the reorganization of officers would just strongly encourage you to consider, when you look at officers, to be diverse in terms of newly elected and continuing people to serve in those roles. I think that's when this board works best in terms of being unified, is when we have differing perspectives in those officer roles. So I would just encourage you, as you're getting ready for those and you're thinking about whether or not you're going to be volunteering to be nominated for one of those officer positions, is to stagger it, so it's not just all newly elected, nor is it all continuing board directors. So that's one pearl of wisdom. The other one is, is what I would say is matching the greatness that happens in our schools. As a governing board, when we can get to the point to where we've matched the greatness that happens every day for our kids, whether on the bus, whether in the cafeteria, whether in classrooms, then we will have arrived, I think, to be a system again that's the lighthouse district. And so I would just encourage you to kind of keep that in the back of your mind. How are your actions reflecting the greatness that happens? And I think if we can make sure that that's the focus, you guys will just, will do tremendous things for kids. Thank you for the reception. I think I said mostly what I needed to say at the reception, but again, thank you to all of you who came. I'm going to save my what I really want to say statements for my tell-all book that I'm going to be publishing sometime in the future, so just have to wait for that to get, no. I just will tell you what a joy it's been to be part of this system for 33 years, and truly, it's obviously been a significant part of my life. I hope I'm walking away feeling like that I gave as much as the system gave to me and my family, and so just want to say thank you to the community that gave me the opportunity to be in this position, but also the previous years of people that I have just treasured their friendship and relationship. And then as far as you guys, I mean, first of all, Director Page, you were exactly the man that we saw when you interviewed for us, a man of principle and a man of focus on kids, and really appreciated your statements to say, you know what, I would do it all over again, even knowing that there's political capital sometimes to be paid, because you're standing for what's best for children. So thank you for being that man of integrity on the board, and it's been a pleasure to meet you. Director Peterson, thank you for those very gracious and kind words. I think he and I really found our rhythm, which we didn't have at the beginning, but I have great regard for the work that Director Peterson has done. I know there was some celebration about just how hard he worked to get people that typically we haven't heard from to support our district, that supported our district, and so I will certainly say to Director Peterson, thank you, thank you for countless hours, and you deserve a break, so I'm glad you actually took time to not be here tonight, because I think you deserve a break after all the hours and hours that you put in. And then, you know, to the rest of you, I mean, I could go down the dais certainly. You know, Director Weiniger, I've known her forever. She used to play Guitar Hero in my basement, and as a high school student, and so our relationship has been one of those kind of relationships. So just watching you evolve into someone that truly has an understanding of this role has been a delight. Director Williams, you're absolutely right, we didn't always agree on the path to get us there, but you're probably one of the first ones, next to Director Myers, that really felt like we kind of broke down some barriers, you know? It was just because you were very honest and I was honest. We, I can still remember that coffee at FICA, where we sat down and we just went at it and made sure that the hatchet was buried and that we could continue on, but your sense of humor truly is one that went after my heart, and I think we have a special relationship in that. And certainly, Director Myers, you're correct, we, I don't know if it's because we're old people that we bonded or what it was, but we do have a relationship, and I'm grateful. I'm really grateful that we got to a point, we turned a corner to where this board really does like each other as people, and we can do the tough stuff because of that. This one to my left, I can't even look at her, because we go way back, and she has left a legacy as well. She worked for the district and did some incredible things in our communications department, and she continues to have such an incredible impact on other districts. I mean, the leadership that this woman portrays when she goes to places like Stratton and other places, and helps boards build to be better boards, is just endless, and her advocacy for kids, all kids. And it took all my self-control not to respond to a couple of public comments tonight, because that was absolutely uncalled for, I will just say, because you're talking to a woman that has placed her entire career and life focus on doing this kind of work, and nobody deserves to be ridiculed in that manner. So I will just say that she is an amazing, amazing individual that has led the way in our district, in many other districts, and has been a friend beyond measure. I will also just do a shout-out to Director Hanson, who I think certainly probably should have been invited to this as well, who had been a director for three, almost four years before she had to resign, but she too championed, you know, the cause for kids and has an incredible heart, and so I would shout out to her as well for all her work on this dais in these last couple of years. So again, thank you for the reception. I want to thank Renee and Ann for all the behind-the-scenes work that the two of you do to keep us set up and put food on the table and just make the culture around here so inviting. Both of you are just, as we were talking earlier, truly a remarkable individual, so thank you for all the support you give into me personally, as well as to this board. And Superintendent Kane and Cabinet, my goodness, you know, I've watched us travel some pretty incredible roads together. I've learned a tremendous amount, but I can't thank you enough for the work that all of you do for this system. It's, I think, I heard Superintendent Kane said she would put her cabinet against any other cabinet in the entire nation or entire state of Colorado easily, and I would certainly echo that and applaud that as well. So that's, I think, did I cover everything that I needed to? So anyway, that's what I will say. I'm just delighted to have had the opportunity, and I will not go away, just like Director Page, I will be checking up on you, and I will be giving you emails and texts and all that good stuff, just to let you know that I'm still there in case you miss my voice. So with that, I would love to make a motion to adjourn my final meeting for the night.
Second.
Second.
Third.
Motion by Ray, seconded by Myers. Meek.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Page.
Aye.
Peterson.
I might vote no to keep Director Ray, but in this case, based on the process, I shall vote aye.
Ray.
Way too kind, Director Peterson. Mine's an aye.
Williams, aye. Weiniger?
Aye.
And with that, the Board of Education is now adjourned.